All right, can you guys hear me? All right, thank you for your patience. We're just waiting for our city manager to get back. We had a quick bio break after our closed session. Not to share his business, but... All right, I'm gonna call to order the May 19, 2025 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to Order. We're gonna begin with an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please. "We gather here tonight from the many for the many. Our fellow Royal Oakers put us here at this dais to make important decisions on their behalf, to study the facts, debate the policies, and prioritize the needs of our beloved city. We recognize the importance of our role, the many diverse residents we serve, and the challenge of finding consensus among so many unique perspectives. We ask for the strength, courage, and wisdom to serve our fellow citizens with compassion, respect, and fairness. Let us remember that a free society is not defined as complete and uniform agreement; rather, a free society promotes and embraces many different points of view and accepts that disagreement is a healthy process, finding our collective way forward. Let us not demonize each other when we disagree; rather, thank each other for helping shape a better future. May we draw inspiration from our greatest heroes, of whom we will honor this weekend at our Memorial Day Parade and Service. We offer our highest reverence and gratitude for their sacrifices; may their names never be forgotten. We ask for the safe return home of all those who serve our city, both in uniform and not. Amen."
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple proclamations to begin with. We have a proclamation declaring the first Friday in June 2025 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Royal Oak. Is Ms. Darland here? Come on up, there's other folks for Moms Demand Action, come on up here, please. Okay, so it is a privilege and honor to read this proclamation, declaring the first Friday in June 2025 National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Royal Oak. Whereas in 2021, gun deaths hit a 40-year-high of 48,830 deaths in that year alone. And whereas on December 31, 2024, when the data was tallied, prognosticators believed that the trend of the pandemic-era surge could finally be abating with 2024, reporting the third year of straight firearm deaths and injuries declining. And whereas, while this data can be encouraging and Americans can gain clarity on gun violence trends, enabling informed prevention efforts, Americans also must be acutely aware of the challenges still before us. Whereas the nonprofit Gun Violence Archive, GVA, compiled figures indicate gun deaths decreased for a third year, dropping 12% from 2023 to 2024, and firearm injuries down 14% in the same timeframe. It is vital to note, death rates do not include suicide by gun, which accounts for more than half of all gun deaths, and tracking injuries presents its own set of challenges, which incident-tracking incapable of tracking all firearm injuries. And whereas, these figures prove the work of increasing gun violence awareness is having an impact, however, firearms remain one of the leading causes of death in our country's youth, with 5,151 children and teenagers under the age of 18 having been shot in 2024 and 1,403 succumbing to their injuries, forever lost to their family and friends. And whereas cities across the nation, including in Royal Oak, are working to end senseless violence with evidence-based solutions, and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers, in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources, know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 6, 2025, to recognize the 28th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, born June 2, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton and all the victims of gun violence, including the families and loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join the campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 6, the first Friday in June in 2025, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 6, 2025, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and to continue the trend of declining numbers of deaths and injuries from gun violence, and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them, and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Royal Oak Mayor Mike Fournier, and members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby declare the first Friday in June, June 6, 2025, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Royal Oak, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence. We encourage all citizens to raise awareness by wearing orange, to demonstrate their support of Royal Oak and all surrounding communities, in efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence, to honor the value of human lives, and to further declare that we are a country that must do more to end this public health pandemic." I will present these proclamations to you. And if you could and wouldn't mind saying a few words, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
First of all, let me say thank you to the mayor and the city of Royal Oak for making the proclamation, so that we can draw more attention to the need for gun violence prevention and honor the victims of gun violence. My name is Diana Darland, and I'm here with Deb Oschowski and Jeb Bettis, and we represent the South Oakland Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. We're here also to thank the city for making the proclamation. As the Wear Orange proclamation highlights, it's important to remember and honor the victims and survivors of gun violence, and to do all that we can to end this uniquely American public health crisis. Every day, 125 people in the United States are killed with guns, and more than 200 people are wounded. Women in America are 28 times more likely to be killed by guns than women in other high-income countries, and every month, an average of 70 women are shot to death by an intimate partner in the United States. It bears repeating the tragic fact that gun violence is the leading cause of death for children and teens in the United States. Behind every statistic like this is a person whose life was ended or changed by gun violence, someone's parent, someone's child, someone's sibling, or best friend. Yet, there is reason for optimism. The passage of four gun safety laws in Michigan is certainly movement in the right direction. The laws are now in effect due to a groundswell of public support, the lobbying of gun safety advocates like Michigan Moms Demand Action, and the hard work of our state legislators in Lansing. On February 13, 2024, the Safe Storage Law was enacted, and it requires individuals to keep weapons unloaded and locked if a minor is likely to be on the premises. Failure to do so, if the gun is used in connection with an act of gun violence, is a crime. The other three laws concern universal background checks for all gun purchases, extreme-risk protection orders, also known as red flag laws, and the domestic violence firearm ban. Another piece of legislation aimed at keeping kids safe from gun violence also passed through the House Committee on Education. Commonly referred to as the Safe Homes, Safe Schools Bill, it requires our schools to provide parents with informational material about gun violence prevention and laws. Members of our Moms Demand Action group are eager and available to make gun safety and secure firearm storage presentations at city council meetings or to any group within the city. One program we have found to be very effective and well-received is called Be Smart for Kids. It's a framework for parents, caretakers, and community leaders to keep our kids safe from gun violence through secure storage measures and open communication about guns and gun safety. The "smart" in Be Smart stands for: secure all guns in homes and vehicles, model responsible behavior around guns, ask about the presence of unsecured guns in other homes, recognize the role that guns play in suicide, and tell your peers how to be smart. Finally, I'd like to mention that we'll be offering free gun locks to gun owners during our Wear Orange tabling event at the Royal Oak Farmers Market on Saturday, June 7, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Please do let us know if you would like more information on how we can work together to ensure that the city of Royal Oak continues to be the wonderful and safe place it is to live in. Thank you very much. Thank you very much."
I just want to thank Moms Demand Action, because of your work, more awareness and more progress is being done on this issue, and it ties into so many things that we're trying to work with as a city in public safety, and some of the things we're doing with Oakland County Health Network, some of the things we do with our veterans group, Veteran Suicide, is another national tragedy that we have in this country, and so what you're doing touches so many different aspects of what so many others are doing as well. So thank you for all of your efforts, we're grateful for it. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing Lawrence Miller and the inaugural Trek for Vets. Mr. London, how are you? So this is really interesting and inspiring, what we have coming up. Mr. London, I'll try not to steal any thunder, other than read the proclamation, and then Mr. London can talk about it, because this is a really neat thing that's happening, and we're glad to be part of it as a city. So it's a proclamation recognizing Lawrence Miller and the inaugural Trek for Vets. Whereas Lawrence Miller, a United States reconnaissance Marine veteran, has launched a charitable initiative known as Trek for Vets, designed to raise awareness and support for the critical challenges faced by veterans in the United States. And whereas, this inaugural Trek for Vets journey spans 222 miles across the state of Michigan, beginning on May 15 from St. Joseph on Michigan's western shore, and culminating in the city of Royal Oak on Memorial Day, coinciding with the Royal Oak Memorial Day Parade. Whereas Mr. Miller is committed to completing the 12-day journey on foot, traveling through cities, towns, and villages to bring visibility to the pressing issues veterans face, including PTSD, homelessness, suicide, and the need for both physical and mental recovery. And whereas, the demanding nature of this endeavor is intentional, reflecting the resilience and sacrifice demonstrated by veterans during their service to our nation. Whereas Trek for Vets is a rallying cry to encourage communities across Michigan and beyond to unite in active support of those who have served, and to reimagine how we express gratitude to our veterans. And whereas Mr. Miller will conclude this trek by delivering remarks at the Royal Oak Memorial Day Ceremony, inviting the community to honor the courage of those who served and to acknowledge the work still required to support them. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Royal Oak Mayor Mike Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby recognize and commend Lawrence Miller for his leadership, sacrifice, and dedication through the creation of Trek for Vets, and encourage all residents to support this meaningful cause as we welcome him to Royal Oak on Memorial Day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as you just heard, Lawrence can't be here right now because he is currently walking through Amish country with about an 80-pound ruck on his back. He got this idea and floated it by me not that long ago. Wanted to do something that was very visible, very meaningful, and something that could hopefully grow and have legs of its own. I used to be the chairman of the Veterans Vets Committee here in Royal Oak, and we would do the Ruck 22 March every year, which raises money, and we gathered food and clothing for needy and homeless vets. So this is, we want this to kind of grow into something like that, that it can, we'll have another one next year. Maybe we take the best practices we learned from this one, when Lawrence gets back, and spread throughout the nation, so other people in other states can do this as well. Because at the end of the day, we all want the same thing. We want to bring awareness to veteran issues, and something beyond the, oh, thank you for your service, and we all get that, and we all appreciate that, but that's usually the end of the transaction at some point, when somebody says, ah, thank you for your service, and then they don't have to think about it anymore. We don't want people to, you know, fret about this all year long, but we do want them to engage. The veteran community is not as big a portion of the population as it used to be, but it's no less important now. So we're raising awareness of veteran homelessness, certainly of PTSD, of the veteran suicide problem, which is still unfortunately much higher than the average rate, and even things like physical disability and mental disability, which even now, we're starting to still dealing with some of the stigma over the years of people who just go, ah, you know, it's in your head, don't worry about it. We want to change that. And Lawrence is, I'm very proud of him for what he's doing, and hopefully we can... And Lawrence is, I'm very proud of him for what he's doing, and hopefully we can take this idea and be back here next year for another round of Trek for Vets and hopefully have more people along the way next time who want to participate as well. So I wanted to say thank you to the city of Royal Oak and looking forward to Lawrence. He's going to be finishing his 200-plus-mile trek at the beginning of the parade, on the morning of Memorial Day Parade, and will finish the last, I don't know, half-mile or whatever it is up the road, and then he'll be speaking there. So please come to the parade, cheer on all your veterans, and hopefully stick around to see some of the words he has to say. He'll be a little dirty, probably a little stinky by then, but you know what? It'll be very uplifting. So I hope you can all come to the parade and see that, and thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. London. My service here after all. Highly enough, the mayor will be a little dirty and a little stinky, too. All right. That brings us to item number six, which is the fiscal year-ending 2026 budget presentation. But I know before that, we have a member, the chairman from our planning commission here, Mr. Casada, and I'm wondering, Mr. Gacho, if this is a better time to have him, because I know he has things to do tonight, to have him give a brief presentation to the commission.
We learned that Mr. Murphy and Mr. Lambert are also going to give presentations, so we have to give it with them.
Okay.
You don't need to do it right now.
Okay. All right, then we can post.
It's up to you. You're ready?
You're ready?
Yeah.
Well, then come on up. Do it now.
Where do you want to go?
If you want to come up to this microphone or this one here, your choice, Mr. Casada and Mr. Gattina.
The budget presentation should be queued up, but I believe they're going to offer comments. Did you have a presentation?
We are here discussing the master plan.
Yeah.
The last agenda.
Is there a formal PowerPoint being presented from you?
The consultant from that project is going to be presenting that today.
You're just giving the planning commission's perspective to this body?
Yep.
Okay.
Just a verbal.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you very much. We didn't know where we were on the agenda, so we apologize. So I'm Gary Casada. I'm the chair of the planning commission. I'm here with a co-chair or a second chair, Woody Gattina, and we thought this is our document.
Is your mic on, Mr. Casada?
It's supposed to be. It said it was on.
Yeah, there it is.
I want to speak briefly.
Does this sound better?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. I'll start, do I start over? I'm Gary Casada. I'm the chair of the planning commission. This is Woody Gattina, and we're here to just give the city commission overview. We know that the mayor and Commissioner Douglas are part of the planning commission. The rest of you are not, and you're going to vote on this perhaps tonight, and we thought you ought to hear from us what's in it, what's it about. We've been immersed in it. I don't know if you guys have been, but I think it's important for the public and yourselves to sort of get an overview here. Now, you will get more from the department and from the consultant later, but this is our perspective, and it's going to be a summary, okay? So what's in the master plan? What does it say? In broad brush, it's an aspirational document, for one thing. It doesn't by itself create any new laws. I think you guys all know that. But it does set forth goals for the community to look forward to in the future, to try to advance and accomplish. There are six goals in the master plan. Reinforce the city structure, advance sustainability, provide more housing options, preserve and enhance the neighborhoods, reinforce activity centers, and increase mobility. Those are the six. What does it mean? Again, broad brush, all six of these speak really to the same thing. It's about what do people like about Royal Oak? We had, this has been a couple-year process. I have to tell you something, I can't remember. It's more than two years, I think, we've been doing this. We got all sorts of input. We had many meetings. We had charrettes. We had individual meetings. The consultant had individual meetings. They met with us. We've had a poll that had almost 3,000 respondents. People sent their comments into the website. When I looked down, there were almost 400 comments. I read every single one of them. We've had a tremendous amount of input, and what they told us and what the consultant heard and what we heard, people like the walkability, they like the parks, they like the downtown, they like to get up in the morning, they like to go down the street to the Dairy Queen or the McDonald's or the diner, or they like to get their hair cut or go to the dentist. They like the community, they like the feel of it. In fact, I thought it was interesting, I don't know if anybody saw Crane's Detroit Business April 21. This is just anecdotal, but this is a story about some baby boomers moving to Royal Oak. And what did they say they liked? They said, "The area offers a walkable feel and such a nice quality of life." They like walkability, okay? That's what attracts people here. That's why we like it, I'm sure. Most people like it, like the bike, they like to walk, they like the schools. And the master plan basically gives you more of what you want. Here's how it does it. All of the existing neighborhood areas, we know people like that. We know that's where most people live. The only property I own in Royal Oak is my single-family home in a single-family neighborhood. Woody owns a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood. So does Jim. So does Brian. I think so does the mayor. The single-family home neighborhoods are central to the whole thing. Those are not going to change. The parks aren't going to change, the schools aren't going to change, institutional is not going to change, the open areas are not going to change. So what do we got to work with? We've got 15% of the land of the city that we can sort of play with, because we're not going to change the rest of it. Those areas are basically along the corridors, along the roads, and what the consultant did was said, okay, we know people like to walk down the street, they like community, like gathering places, they like a sense of place. We're going to find places where roads converge and people can converge, and we're going to make it easier, and we're going to promote those areas to grow their businesses. The recommendation is loosen it up, let them put housing in there. We need more housing options. Let housing go in these areas that will become activity centers, which are already activity centers. I live right around the corner from the Dairy Queen, you know. I go there, you know, with my grandkids and stuff. We already have them. That's why I say it's just giving the people more of what they want. I went to Sands Barber Shop the other day and got a Crisp Bellies. I rode my bike up there, and I wasn't the only one. What is the master plan doing? It's saying, let's find more ways to promote those areas. That's what it's all about. 100%. Every single one of the goals speaks to that. Mobility, the whole thing is sustainable, less driving around, reinforcing activity centers, providing more housing options, enhancing and preserving the neighborhoods, and reinforcing the structure. The whole thing is integrated in that direction. That's what the market says, that's what the people say, okay? Now, I want to address something, especially the five people who are going to vote who weren't on the planning commission, because you may have heard people say things like that this plan will virtually eliminate single-family housing as we know it, or that it will allow apartments or duplexes in the middle of neighborhoods. It doesn't do that. You can rest assured, when you give your vote, that this master plan does not advocate for, suggest, allude, or hint at that. That is not what the master plan is about. When you read a master plan, like, I'm a lawyer, so when I am dealing with ordinances, statutes, contracts, words have meanings, okay? And this master plan, the words in this master plan say, we're going to preserve the neighborhoods, not changing single-family zoning. That's what it says. You can look at the Future Land Use Map, excuse me, pages 13 through 16, and if there's a controversy about that, I don't think anybody can point to anything in this master plan that says we're getting rid of single-family zoning. So I want you to rest assured, you don't have to worry about that. Now, there is one, there is one thing that the master plan goes against the public polling. That is Woodward, okay? Woodward, we hear all the time, business on Woodward struggle, it's dangerous, it's loud, there's cruisers, and back in 2012, the last master plan, the suggestion was, let's narrow Woodward. Our new master plan consultants came with a little bit of a better idea. They said, let's not narrow, let's put slip lanes in, let's see if we can get that done with MDOT. What would that do for us? That will prevent cut-throughs, that will enhance walkability, bikability, sustainability, and it'll be business-friendly. It seemed such a good idea, it's in there. So narrowing Woodward is one of the recommendations. But that's the only thing that the polling didn't support, okay? But we left it in. And so that's the master plan in a nutshell. If you have questions for us, certainly you can direct them at us, and we'll try to answer them. Again, Mr. Murphy and the consultant will be here later.
Any questions right now? Are you, can I save your questions for the presentation?
Well, thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. We appreciate you taking the opportunity tonight. And Vice Chair, do you have something to say as well, sir?
Yes, I could, I'd like to, more editorialized comments, but just to help give some more context. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Casada. As you mentioned, this is an aspirational document. It is a roadmap for what the city could be in 20 to 30 years from now, when my kids are hopefully building their lives and families here as we all have. The land use changes that are suggested in this document will not occur overnight, but change is inevitable and necessary. Time and the free-market forces will determine the scale and pace with which these changes may occur. This master plan merely provides the appropriate guardrails for how and what changes ultimately will happen. Times change, the world is changing, the needs of our city are changing as well. Our demographic is shifting and demanding a city that needs to adapt to an expected future that is more connected, sustainable, and allows for more families to call Royal Oak home. This plan preserves the core of our city, as was mentioned, its strong neighborhood fabric, and will hopefully enhance that in many ways by becoming more connected and walkable, as an example. While no plan is perfect, this plan sets forth a pathway for Royal Oak to continue to be strong for our future generations.
Thank you, Mr. Gattina. All right. Any questions for Mr. Gattina?
Well, we appreciate you guys bringing the planning perspective here ahead of the discussion tonight. I know we do have two members here that sit on it, but sometimes we just take that role too much in the engagement and conversation. To hear the Chair and the Vice Chair's point of view, I think, was probably helpful for the rest of the commission. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I do have one question for Mr. Casada quickly before he sits down.
Sure.
Can you expand on that 15% of the land in the city? Because I know you to be very thorough with your research and having you spent four years dealing with this, so you just tell us more about how you came to that 15% number and what that means and where that land is.
Okay. I did not do the calculation myself, just, you know, it comes from the consultant, but just in general, if you look at the map and you take the single-family neighborhoods, the neighborhoods that are mixed residential neighborhoods, the downtown area that isn't going to change, the schools, the parks, the golf course, you will find that there's only 15% left to deal with. That's where that comes from.
Okay, so when you take away...
Basically along the roads.
Yeah, so when you take away the neighborhoods, the parks, the schools, the downtown, the zoo, the golf course.
Right.
Other open space, what's left? What is the area that we are potentially talking about aspirationally changing?
Pretty much every single inch of what is the target here is along the roadways.
The major thoroughfares, right?
Major roadways, not the neighborhood roadways.
So are you talking about like the Webster and Crooks area?
Well, Webster and Crooks, yes. That's an area that, you know, it's already have been developed a couple times, but that's an area that we'd like to, I think it's a good idea to try to get some targeted growth in there and try to get some activity there, mixed use there. There's a number of these areas in the master plan that are targeted. Some already exist, but again, they will be redeveloped, and they don't necessarily have zoning that would allow housing, wouldn't allow mixed use. So that's something that in the future, we might want to look at.
So as I understand it, like, just look at the map, it's where we see currently like maybe little, for lack of a better word, but strip malls within the city right now. We see maybe two or three little strips of commercial mix on the major roads, or then up in Delamere is a lot of industrial. When I look at the map, that's what I see. Is that about right?
Yes, yes. There are some, like on Lincoln, where you have a strip of commercial, there's also some on Catalpa. Those are kind of limited areas. I think the areas that are more available for growth are like Main Street and 13 and Rochester and 13, and Main and Catalpa, and Delamere and 14 between Normandy, places like that are more available.
So these commercial or industrial nodes that remain in our city is what you see transforming?
There is no other place to do it.
Okay.
As an example, you brought up on Crooks and Webster, you have a mechanic shop right now that is no longer operating, right? So, you know, you're going to have another mechanic shop there as what it's zoned today or whatever those uses are, or do you look at bringing in some sort of mixed use there? Maybe put some nice residential with some, I mean, there's all of these different opportunities to say, okay, well, you know, some types of businesses may be going away, and new types of businesses and new types of development that blend well into the neighborhood will be more preferred.
Yes. Eventually, yes.
Eventually, over time, but we're not the ones deciding. You know that. It's the free market, as Mr. Gattina said, has a lot of the say.
Yes. There's a lot of driving of this plan.
All right, gentlemen.
I hope I answered the question.
Yes.
The passive lawyer can.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Mr. Gacho.
Commission, just one moment while my staff gets our presentation set up. Hopefully. We are trying something new. This is just a habit from how I presented budgets in the past. I like to present to the commission from the public podium. Ah, thank you. I will see if this works. All right, thank you for having me. I'm excited. For those of you who don't know me, I've only been here a couple months. I'm Joe Gacho, I'm the city manager. I was fortunate to be appointed as the next city manager in the middle of January, so this is my first budget process. And it's going swimmingly. You have to turn it on. Okay. So this is my first budget process. Municipal budget processes, like the cities begin, the fiscal year begins in July 1. So as budget processes go, I came in in about the third quarter, not ideal for staff, not ideal for the commission, but I do bring some experience. So what I was looking at initially, these are the initial budget goals that I had when I started really walking in February. That was one, improve the capital plan prioritization, really understand what is, how our capital plan is laid out and how we're prioritizing and ranking priorities. Government modernization, focusing on technology and mobility. Maximizing available funding sources. Royal Oak has several special millages and internal service funds that are really important to understand, and it's incumbent on us to maximize those as best we can, and you'll see that reflected today. I needed to perform a millage analysis, as any new city manager would, and address and understand fund balance usage, which really looks at trends over the past few years and what that looks like moving forward. As I said in the commission workshop, I'm a big fan of bluff statements, so I always begin on the bottom line upfront, so we just get to the end first, and from there, we'll do a quick overview of Royal Oak's revenue profiles, talk about our capital plan for fiscal '26 and moving forward, and then we'll finish with some... then we'll finish with some department priorities. Those priorities are enumerated highlights by the departments themselves as they presented towards the Commission workshop that we conducted on April 12th. There is, the packet does have a full readout of the fiscal '26 draft budget as well, all the details included. I choose not to present the Excel spreadsheet today, then we'll focus in on some of the key initiatives and trend lines. So the bottom line upfront, for the city's fiscal general fund, which is the focus of this slide, we try to give you always a two to three-year lookback, and in the future, which we'll talk about at the end, we'll try to give you a projection, a forecast as well, extended. So really, if you look at, going back to fiscal '24 actual, which is two fiscal years ago, we can see the trend that expenses are really being controlled for the general fund. You're actually looking at a $2.2 million reduction in spending overall during that two-year period, balanced against smaller reduction in revenue. So we have still both negative trends on the spending side and on the revenue side. The spends have outpaced the revenue side, and that's something that we're looking into. Looking at that general fund balance reliance plotted, the 2026 workshop, so about a month ago, we were projecting a reliance at 9.4 to be reduced, to reduce the fund balance down to 9.4 million. That has been, actually, we found some additional cuts recommendations and we've implemented those cuts. And so you're seeing that added about $500,000 back to the fund balance and cut from the operating budget that we'll be proposing to you. So the factors related to this trend line are focused on these three kinds of themes, and that is, one, the millage schedule, understanding the millage schedule. Two, understanding the nature of transfers between funds and what's driving those transfers. And the exponential public safety cost trends that the city of Royal Oak and really every municipality across the nation is experiencing. The bottom line on our millage schedule. So I have showed you what the millage schedule looks like in terms of the city's home rule millages. So the home rule, Michigan has a home rule city statute that really says if you're a charter city, you might levy up to 20 mills to operate, no more. So that is a cap. The millages assigned to that cap include the following. So your general operating millage, that's your general fund, that's what we're talking about. Your public safety is a voter-approved millage. Your solid waste is also a voter-approved millage. Your roads, parks, seniors', rec, and animal shelter are all subject to that 20-mill cap by the home rule city. You look at the total mills of your total 20, right now, next year's budget levy is 14.232. That is fewer than the cap because of the Michigan's headley rollback. So that means collectively, all of these mills have rolled back. You can see they're defined within each category, and the sum of those is 14.23 mills. So we're about 5.75 under the total maximum allowed by the charter in the Michigan Home Rule City Act. Other millages that we, that we have and are projected for fiscal '26, these do not count against that cap. These are above that cap. Their library, these are all optional, for the most part, for the cities to levy. And this library, your drain bonds, that is the amount of debt service the city of Royal Oak owes to Oakland County for their drainage district. You have your solid waste charge, that is levy from the state. The state authorizes up to three, that's been rolled back to 1.85, and now 1.83 moving forward. Your publicity and of course, your DDA tax, that is captured and limited to the businesses within the downtown TIP district. We looked at spend, so that's a look at our millage projection. Here's a look at some of the outstanding ARPA projects that we were looking at in February and that we're looking to repurpose some investment. We discussed this at the budget workshop. We are proposing diverting some of that funding and reinvesting in assault or center roof replacement based on the roofing facility needs. That, that project is critical, we think, for the facility and the population who uses that facility, and the, the cost of that roof are just going to get more expensive. The parking system replacement and Fifth Avenue placemaking project. We will be recommending to divert a total of $1 million from ARPA funds to support both of those downtown projects, and they're essentially collaborations with the Royal Oak DDA to provide the other match funding for both those projects. So collectively, between the ARPA transfer, the DDA, you're looking at $2 million for investment in parking system reinvestments and the Fifth Avenue placemaking project. And finally, there's been discussion about the need for a community wellness center to support our ongoing community athletic needs, as well as provide more 24/7 year-round service, facility services for our seniors. And so we're going to see if there's a community wellness center that could be plotted via feasibility study, and we'll be pending approval, looking to develop the RFP for that. I want to look at fiscal '26 revenue overview. Really, I'm going to look at three main parts. I'm going to do a general fund revenue 101. We're going to look at the public safety fund revenues and the senior services revenues. Here's all the sources of the city's general fund. So you can see the majority of, which is common, the majority of our revenues are associated with property taxes collected. That's Michigan's predominant method for local government revenues. Other states have different sources, it's Michigan's predominant. You can see our next strongest one is licenses, charges, and fines. That's associated with the district court by and large. The district court, for those that don't know, is a department nestled under the general fund. So it is totally paid for and accountable to the general fund. Outside of the courts fees, you're looking at state shared revenues and then your voted property taxes. Your state shared revenues are interesting. If you look back at the early 2000s, that's really when the state began making a change in how they fund local units of government, a lot of the state revenue sharing, and you can see that plotted here. So this kind of gives you a piece of the local, of the local impact of state disinvestment. And I am very open about this, and no offense to our state legislators, but I am a City Manager, and this is something that I tout every year, hoping that there will be legislative change to restore funding for local units of government. But you can look back in 2003, and you can see that red line at the top is where the amount of funding Royal Oak used to get. They made a legislative change and they started funding formulaically less money to local units of government by state revenue sharing. And so the orange is actually what they ended up giving it that year. Ever since then, every year forward, it went down until it flatlined in about 2012. And then it's been relatively flat until after COVID. After COVID, I think the state has done a good job of restoring some revenues and taking a step forward to help cities recover post-pandemic. But over time, you can see the compounding effect of that disinvestment, and it's quite substantial. You're looking at what would be, had they stuck with the original formula, about $4.5 million per year to now just about $1 million per year. So that's a tune of $3.5 million a year net today, had they not changed the formula. We do go for grants quite a bit to try to augment our revenue opportunities, understanding we do have a lot of revenue constraints within Michigan's state structure. And so this, this slide is really just to emphasize the historical trends of grants of the past few years. We, you know, we have many that are still currently in application, not awarded or not determined yet. So this slide will be updated again moving forward as we go through the capital planning in the fall. The public safety is our next biggest fund. The revenue total is about $43.5 million to cover operations. The thing that I would point out, and that I will continue to point out, is that 60% of those revenues are transfers from the general fund. So the millage itself only generates about 31% of its, of the revenues to offset the costs of public safety. The rest is reliant on transfers from the general fund. This chart kind of shows that trend, and this again is a trend you're seeing across all city governments with the cost of public safety. The top line shows you, that shows you the transfers in, so you can kind of get a snapshot of where, what level, I'm sorry, the total cost of public safety. So you're looking at, for police, $20 million in fiscal '20 coming out of COVID. That is now about $27 million in fiscal '26. So that's a $7 million increase in about four fiscal years. It's substantial. And then, so collectively at the bottom, to help offset that cost, you're seeing the public safety have to use its fund balance. And on top of that, also get additional aid from the general fund to offset those costs. So public safety is a substantial, the costs have substantially changed over the past five years post-COVID. For our seniors, we do have guaranteed millage for them as well. You look at their costs, about 50% of their revenues are brought in by the millage. The rest are actually brought in by licenses, contributions, and only about 11% of their budgets reliant on the transfers from the general fund to offset it. So they're mostly, mostly self-sustaining. Little bit of overview for fiscal '26's expenses. We're going to go by categories. I'm going to talk a little bit more about transfers to the other funds. We're going to talk about the capital projects relative to all these revenue realities. Then we'll go into public safeties and the senior services fund as well. So looking at those expenses, just bringing back that slide, you can see the total expenses for the general fund are about $51 million for fiscal '26. That's about 200,000 more than the current projected year-end for fiscal '25 or current fiscal year. There's really four categories for general fund expenses in terms of viewing it. So you look at about 25% of the general fund's costs are personnel. 55%, which is, it's substantial, is transfers out to support other funds. 1% of that is only going to capital needs outside of those transfers, and that's, that's a point that we'll look at. And then 90% is operating. That's your general contractual services, your insurance requirements, your utility requirements that are part of that, and inter-fund chargebacks. Looking at the fiscal '26, transfers from the general fund, our biggest expense, $25 million transferred to public safety, $23 million for the actual general fund, general services costs and park improvements, capital improvements. And the other projected transfers are noted to the right. I would note that the auto parking fund does project right now a $520,000 deficit. That is because we are being conservative. We are about to propose a complete system change that will be effective January 1. This could shake up the revenue model, so we're taking the conservative approach and just being conservative about our revenue projections for parking based on the activity trends. So capital, we talked about, one of my goals was looking at the CIP process. So the team put together a method to organize all the capital projects that were submitted during the fall and give our directors an opportunity to score their own projects based on certain, certain methodology. Of those projects, you can see the total amount requested. So for example, the general fund, there were $2 million of capital requests. We're funding about 492 of those, so we can afford about 23% of what was presented by staff. That means we, we simply push back funding or cut funding for the remaining 70, approximately 67%. Other funds, except for public safety, we were able to fund their capital requests. Public safety also is about, is at about 22.5%. Examples of park projects that you'll see in fiscal '26 that we're proposing funding for, you can see the majority of those general fund-related capital projects are park-related. I would point to the other thing I have, which was maximizing opportunities and funds. We have two specific parks that the park director really advocated for on behalf of the Parks and Rec Commission, and that was addressing some blighted, no longer used park property located at Montegoard and Red Run. And so you can see we, we do have available funds in our risk management fund. That's our insurance fund, and I could use some of that fund balance to address what I would deem a risk. And so these, these facilities, the tennis court at that park and the tennis court basketball at Red Run as well, have not been in production for a long time. So I would view that as a risk, as an opportunity, and so we'll remediate those and restore those to green infrastructure and then wait for the Parks and Rec Commission guidance and looking at the park and rec math plans, guidance on how to repurpose that land moving forward. You can see several place structures have also been proposed. At the public safety, really, they're looking, the fire department is looking to fund SCBA, new SCBA, which is their primary safety apparatus for them. That is their breathing container unit and their mask. They both work together, they're very expensive. We're putting those on a life cycle. We should get about 10 years out of them. Right now, though, we have several standards chasing, so we are trying to fund, we're trying to get all of them replaced over a four-year period. So it's $170,000 a year today to cycle in about a quarter of our firefighters. And so we're doing that over the next four years, and over four years, Chief tells me he believes that they'll have 100% of their firefighters will have modern SCBA equipment. The largest public safety capital is the police Exxon, and that's really everything that they do. If you look at the importance of body cameras, dash cam, any of their online evidence.com, all of that is reliant on Exxon technology, and that's an annual payment. Those, those fees should just be assumed to be reoccurring unless we want to cancel dash cam, and I don't think that that's a commission goal. So these are annual costs, it's a five-year contract. This is the annual contract cost. The technology will be re-upped likely at the end of every five-year cycle. And so I view that as the ongoing cost of transparency, public safety for the police department. We have FLOCK-LPR fees, and of course, the library has a solar roof installation, which we expect to occur after July 1, but that, we are very close to getting the bid documents out for that, and that's an exciting project. The library's roof is currently being replaced right now, and it's being replaced in a way that it is assuming, the engineers always assume, already assume to bring in solar to the rooftop, and that is an ARPA project approved by the Commission and supports our climate action plan goal for that facility. Other funds, this is really, again, a good example of maximizing the funds that we do have. And so the IT is an internal service fund, we have available fund balance. They're making sure that we are modernizing government by emphasizing mobile workforce and really emphasizing cybersecurity, making sure that we're on the forefront of those protections for both our workforce and the citizens is important. And mobile workforce is critical and a priority for me in terms of service responsiveness. It's an expectation in 2025, and I expect us to be on the leading front of that. We do have available fund balance to perform those upgrades and modernize, and I've authorized the IT director to put forth an aggressive budget request, which will get us there. So none of that is general fund, that is all internal service fund, fund balance. You see a number of senior center fund in our arena as well. We did cut a Zamboni replacement as a capital request presented to the Commission during the April 12 workshop. That's an example of a capital project that was defunded. You'll also note that the motor pool doesn't have any vehicles approved. We actually asked the DPS Director, Kevin Yee, to look at the policy, and so they are actually updating the fleet management policy, and they will hold vehicle requests until we get that policy in order. That policy is going to be looking for our path to EV conversion. We want a logic for that. That is going to be the future. There will be less gas meant to vehicles, and it's going to be more efficient for the taxpayers. So he will be giving us a policy that reflects that, that direction, that's also consistent with the Clapton Action Plan. There we go. Looking at all, if you look at all the CIPs, it's a stacked bar chart. This is kind of your annual spending requests over a five-year, six-year period. We update this plan every fall, so we actually only allocate one year out, but we project six years out with the capital plan. And so these are just kind of, it gives you a good visual about who's asking for what five to six years out. You can see the general fund has a greater ask in 2930. Lots of facilities ask that are deferred right now. And the city actually has approved a facility condition assessment. We should get those results, and those results will give us detailed- We should get those results and those results will give us detailed issues across all of our facility portfolio. And will give us really good data on what the actual capital priorities that we can recommend, beginning with a capital improvement plan next fall. So talking about the fiscal 26 performance priorities, we've talked about activating funds and I'm going to begin with kind of the big headlines about what we've attacked first. We've talked a little bit about those. Service reorganization and that is an error, I didn't catch. Senior services fund revenues, we will not be talking about now. So looking at the building division, the building division is responsible for the city state construction fund. We will be announcing a new program that's going to be using available state construction fund, fund balance to use those fees to really put a return of investment for real low property owners. So in three ways, Reno is residential enhancement and neighborhood opportunity. We are looking to activate the climate action plan by waiving any and all city related permit fees or inspection fees related to any residential or commercial project that can deliver on these green neighborhood goals. So this is really focusing on what we can do locally to reduce the cost barriers for residents to reinvest in their houses. You're looking at workforce housing. That is related to the proposed master land use plan. So you're looking at that supporting middle income housing development. That is consistent with Governor Whitmer and the state's policy direction as they've been looking at their own policies. Really looking to see what the state can do and now what locals can do to complement those laws to inspire more missing middle housing, which is really a great need across Michigan, but also a priority for this community. So that would be the same thing. We'd be looking at proposing a waiver of city related fees along permits, inspections and any other administrative fees. We would reimburse those for any project that delivers units between 80 and 120% AMI. That is defined as workforce housing. And then senior housing improvements. We also have an agent place policy. We, we want people to be able to be comfortable enough to improve their home here and not have to move out. And so here you look at the same thing. We will be offering a waiver of all city related costs as it relates to building improvements on your property that qualify for accessibility upgrades, essential repairs and so on and so forth. I expect us to develop the intake process and the, on the public communication materials for this. And hopefully this is implemented by September with staff pending council, commission approval. So why it matters, all of that wave, all those waivers reduce barriers in cost for homeowners, developers and older adults to achieve the policy objectives of the commission that we've been stated, that we've been talking about. Also really looking at modernization, I want to exercise the fund balance of the state construction fund to become the premier easiest place to do business in Oakland County and in the area. And to do so, I think we have a wonderful opportunity to look at an AI online permitting tool, looking at some of our surveys and we'll be issuing additional customer service surveys. One thing that governments can do is try to make it easier for homeowners who are trying to just build a deck to interpret the code without having to talk to us. That's a very easy thing that AI can do now to help augment everyone's experience. And that goes for developers too, who are interested in building something. You could now with this tool end up getting, asking questions essentially and having that feedback come back to you. And then the time you get to us, you should have a vetted qualified project with plans that you know have been qualified against the city, the state's building codes and the city's codes as well. So that, that's really the goal is to be proactive about that from a service perspective and really do what we can to get you the answers as quickly as possible, leveraging the amount of technology available today. We look to implement proactive short term rental management. I know that the commission adopted a short term rental ordinance last year. We will be looking at host compliance software. That is software that will essentially scrape the data from all publicly, publicly available short term rental sites. That's Verbo, VRBO, that's Airbnb. I'm sure there's several. It knows those more than I do, which tells you why not rely on someone, rely on a, on a technology built for that. And it's going to scrape those because your short term rentals are really going to, the volume of short term rentals in your community are going to change depending on, on the season especially. So this will help us articulate that and then we'll be able to make sure that we can proactively manage that and make that a service friendly process. And then finally, we'll be doing a third party fee study as well. And we'll be introducing customer service benchmarks for a building department with that idea that we will be the number one business friendly place in Oakland County. And that is, that's the vision. Now for the IT internal service fund, this kind of gives you a picture of why there's fund balance. So we just haven't been spending the money on, on the capital infrastructure. We have the money, we just haven't been spending it. And so you can see the spending actually is the bottom trend line and it's been flatlined. Meanwhile, technology and government organization has changed very aggressively, especially post pandemic. So it will only continue to do that with the, with the introduction of AI, which is going to become more and more common. And so we really want to understand that, understand the cybersecurity adjustments we need to make for that. We want to make outward facing network improvements for the public facing network. We need all that to be secure. And if we're going to have a mobile workforce, we need their interface with our network to be secure. So that's what you see in that expense trend line and that is all using available fund balance with no impact on the general fund. So we're able to really, in my opinion, I think we have an opportunity to really enhance services without touching the general fund.
Joe, I'm sorry, just really quick, if I can point out, so that is using funds that have already been set aside for IT infrastructure and upgrades. So this is not taking money that would have gone to a park, to a road, to police funding. This is money that has already been paid for into an IT fund. So that's why you see that sharp increase is because it's been saved away for so long.
Correct. And it's, it's restricted for IT only. It can't be transferred back out. Some of those, and this, this is a little in the weeds, so I'll just bullet through this, but you're looking at network switch upgrades, disaster recovery and server environment. That's, that's a really big one. So we need to have, we need to be prepared if a tornado knocks out city hall. It doesn't just evaporate the network. We should have redundancy there. That's a common best practice and we're going to be investing in that. In terms of recreation, this is an example of some of our adjustments in terms of reorging that I wanted to talk about. And so we have before this year, the Parks and Rec Department was a subset of the Department of Public Services. One of the things I noted with clarity is that there's 51 parks in this community and it seems like that should make the department stand on its own. And so we want it to be more public facing with that department because parks programming is more public facing. So we pulled them out of a DPS and we moved them over to city hall. So right now our new director, Nikki McKeatron, is located right across the hall. And we are now accepting parks and rec related processing services at the city hall counter with all of our other services. So we've also consolidated our service center in the, in the city hall, which we think is more forward facing for, for customers. In addition, we have 51 parks and we have historically one director and one admin. That's a lot to put on one, one person. So what I offered up was to reduce staffing levels in my office and trade that to Parks and Rec. So I am recommending that the Parks and Recreation Department gets a full time rec coordinator. Really focusing on implementing overseeing all of our many sports contracts across those 51 parks, which we do have many. That's a big responsibility and I think that will really help optimize things for Parks and Rec. It's a step in the right direction. Looking at our DPS, they oversee everything. This is National Public Works Week, so we did go down and visit them this morning. The mayor and I dropped off some coffee and donuts to express our appreciation. But as I said, and I don't want to gloss over that actually, those are pretty big things besides just general public services. And being pretty much the city's backbone, they're looking at maintaining all of your forestry and your right of way, your sidewalks, your solid waste, your water, all of our fleet that delivers those services, all the city facilities, one of which we're in today. They're really the invisible thing that can't be missed and we choose to honor them around the third week of May every year. So with that, public services, we're talking about emphasizing alignment with the climate action plan again. We are looking at bids for EV chargers at the senior center. Additional EV chargers, we're working with DTE on that. We'd have a little bit of a bottleneck with DTE on, on some analysis, but I expect that to be accrued in July 1 for the new fiscal 26 year. We did purchase this first electric EV transition video, vehicle that serves directly our senior population. And I think that was, that's a pretty awesome signal of EV investment. The first thing is service oriented, it's not staff oriented. As I mentioned, we're recommending a replacement of the Salter Center. Also the DPS building roofs are in need of replacement as part of the capital funding. Should we, should we identify the opportunity?
The Salter Center roof?
The Salter Center roof, yes. I'm sorry if I misspoke, the Salter Center roof only. And then of course, Kevin Yee, the director is focused on succession planning there as well as new director. He's really looking to make sure that we have a deep bench of certified professionals who are able to augment all city services. And like, like me, he believes strongly in education, promotion, professional development and succession planning. We hope to restore the sustainability manager. We didn't modify the job description to add a systems to it, so now it's a sustainability system manager. Systems is an active word there for us. We really want to make sure that we're sending a signal to the community and across the organization. The sustainability is, is part of our systems and it's on us to set the tone and integrate sustainability within all of our major infrastructure projects. And so once, once placed, they'll be working closely with our DPS on policies and on making sure that we are making that investment with intention. Looking at sanitation, sanitation is going to be an interesting fun that we hope to activate. So we have a lot of goals here related to the climate action plan. We do have a zero waste emphasis. So half of the sustainability systems position is going to be focused on waste. And so we have offered a very positive pilot project for composting in the farmer's market last year. This year we're proposing to expand that. And so the next sustainability systems director is going to be responsible for giving us a plan to get that into the neighborhoods. So it's, it offers better convenience and that's going to be funded through the solid waste millage. To do that, I'm proposing a $75,000 compost program budget based on my own historical knowledge for the vendor cost for this, this kind of program. So that is, that's in the budget request. As well as I think looking at funding a downtown waste management plan, I'm going to look for the sustainability system director to do that. Downtown waste management plan really looks at all of the waste streams in the downtown. And then will provide us some recommendations on compactor policy. If there's a desire to centralize compacting in the downtown and reduce the amount of waste containers in our alleys, which would be restoring the alleys for public uses and not waste uses. So there's, there's some efficiencies to be studied there and you need, you need to study before you actually implement something like that. And we're also going to look at recycling downtown. We're going to look at composting downtown. And so we'll look at all those waste streams, give us recommendations and cost benefit analysis for all those implementations. And then finally on the capital, it's on the agenda today. One of the major sources for the ARPA fund diversion is because the farmer's market restroom came in. It was previously a project to expand the farmer's market and offer extended outdoor restroom. That bid, that budget was $750,000. The bid came back between 1.3, 1.5 million, including contingency. So I chose not to recommend pursuing that forward. And so we did not award a contract. Instead, my recommendation to the commission was to, I think, go a little smaller and get some data. So we, I asked the DPS to think about this with a different lens and get creative. And so he did contact the city of Ann Arbor and the city of Ann Arbor has partnered with Throne to offer a pilot. They have many more than what we're recommending. But really favorable reviews, we've gone down there and got the user experience. It's a portable restroom project that is completely self-contained from the city's perspective. We don't have any usage data right now, so once you build it in a permanent place, you can't move it. So the last thing I want to do with our limited amount of money is invest in public restrooms without understanding what the demand is. So Throne is really going to be able to do that and they are portable. They're completely self-contained. The city has no maintenance obligation. We don't have any weekend labor overtime obligation for our DPS to, to clean it. And the improvements are all going to be funded by virtue of that licensing agreement. And finally, infrastructure improvements. So when we're looking at long-term infrastructure, we took, we, we took this look and I'd say we're celebrating the farmer's market hitting its centennial this year. Underneath that are centennial water mains. So we kind of, we kind of juxtapose those two views of infrastructure. And right now I'm focusing on what's underneath. So we looked at these two factors when we're thinking about long-term infrastructure. We did want to take a long-term view of it this year. So looking at unit price increases for all of the major components of construction in the right of way, they've all gone up substantially. It's a different game. I think anyone that has tried to modify their house in the past couple of years can find that, will find that out. So really, you know, I asked our engineer to summarize the change in unit costs over the course of the post-COVID recovery. And you're looking at a substantial margin. We're looking at a typical 3.3 to 5% assumption, which is, you know, in some cases your limestone aggregate, look at that's increased by 175 and a half percent, which is a requirement of many of our infrastructure projects. So what I'm saying is the dollar for your infrastructure project tomorrow won't get you the dollar, your dollar will go as far as it did in 2019. So we can really do less with more. And so that's an important thing to understand and we understand that when we look at our road infrastructure. So the commission and the, well, the public approved of the road millage. It's a 10 year road millage and I think that was approved in 23 by voters. So we, we have about eight years left in that. So we want it, we know that we're digging up the roads. While we're digging up the roads, we know that our unit costs are increasing a lot. And so we also know that it's really costly to rip up a road after you, after you finish it. So it makes sense to try to repair the water and invest and upgrade the water underneath those roads as you go. And so we have a, a good schedule for our roads from our engineer. We have that lookout. We know what we're doing within the next 10 years and what we'd like to do. And so we're proposing that we issue water bonds, which is about $25 million of water bonds to make sure that we can do the, the water infrastructure upgrades underneath the scheduled roads, getting us to about 2030. And finally, looking at your streets. In a, in a snapshot, you're looking at the fiscal, your fiscal capital, capital for fiscal 26. You're looking at about $2.9 million in spending from the local roads fund, about 8.2 million from major roads. That's the road millage. And we're proposing about $6.7 million in water infrastructure projects, a portion of those funded through bond proceeds. What that does include is the current plans for Rochester Road, which will be an extended project as well as 11 mile road. All of those have secured federal funding associated with them. Those are other dollars paying to improve the road. So we know that that funding is already locked in, loaded for the next three years on the federal side. The traffic signal upgrades, we are looking for traffic signal improvements and pedestrian, pedestrian oriented improvements for all of these. The engineer is, and you look at the water infrastructure side, we're trying to time out. What I did is provide kind of a snapshot of those water infrastructure projects that we're projecting out. All going to be complementing road improvement projects from the millage. So we will not be digging up those new, those newer roads in the future to retroactively do the water infrastructure. We're going to be doing it while we go. And then the unfunded mandate from the state lead line replacement. We have about, just about approximately 1,800 lead lines still to meet their mandate. The cost of a lead line replacement is also going up every year as more cities have to meet those mandates. The EPA did update the rules and I do believe that we now have to be completely lead free by 2037 on the private side. And it is the city's obligation to fund those replacements. And so that is also included funding, that is also recommended in this budget and also recommended as part of that bond issuance. And finally, on the planning side, to complement that infrastructure, you are looking at the zoning ordinance update. And that really is going to take that online services approach. You can be looking at investing in an AI tool that's going to that's going to accompany that traditional zoning ordinance approach, which would really help folks kind of self-search and self-query our zoning ordinance to hopefully remove some of the complexity and just get you the answer you need right away when you need it. And then, complete streets guide, this is, this is a city manager initiative. So this complements all three of our goals. So you're looking at the Master Land Use Plan, the Climate Action Plan, and Agent Place Plan, all have a position on pedestrian safety, all have a position on mobility, and all have a position on development as it relates to mobility. And so, really, we are looking at putting out a bid for a complete streets plan, which will also correlate with the commissioner objective around safe, Safe Routs to School, yes, there's so many safe plans. Safe Routs to School, which is an application with the state of Michigan that we currently have underway. We are currently partnering with the Royal Oak School District to collect data to strengthen our application and hopefully get a Safe Routs to School grant. The Safe Routs to School grant application, the score is strengthened if you have a complete streets policy. So you're more likely to get that grant if we have the policy, which is another reason that we want to prioritize that policy to make sure that we can maximize our opportunity to get those grant dollars and ultimately improve the safety of our streets. This is a good example of just kind of the streetwide view of a complete street. You can kind of see a project before and thinking about the whole dynamic of a street and its definition. You're looking at curb-to-curb view of kind of development. So the development doesn't stop just at the sightline. We have to think about it, how will people access that facility and around that facility? What do we need to do to improve those connections? And that after kind of shows you how the complete street mentality is incorporated into design standards. And on our community development block grant, we just broke ground on Clausen Park. This will be funded in July 1. Thank you to the person who covered my face, the kid who covered my face with sand. I'm somewhere back there. It was, it's a great project. It was a great, we had a ribbon cutting for the community out there. We had a great, great support from the kids that came out. And I'm really excited to deliver that project. But I highlight this because of the federal unknowns. The president's budget did propose cutting the CDBG, I'm sorry, the Congress's budget proposed cutting the CDBG funds and the program. So I don't know what direction that's going to go, but this is an example of how the city of Royal Oak relies on federal CDBG funding to achieve local improvement goals. And it's, we have historically prioritized CDBG to support our seniors and fund our Roses program for housing and chores and to form parks and investments. So really, those dollars hit locally. And it's pretty important for me to emphasize not losing this funding and advocate for that funding for any of our legislators watching. We'll close on public safety, our largest department. So the public safety revenues, again, looking at that, they're reliant on 60% of their revenues are reliant on the general fund. If you look at a history of police expenditures over the past several years, you can see the cost of policing is much more expensive today than it was the first year coming out of the pandemic. I wanted to break that down more for you so you can understand the composite cost of a police officer. And so, on the left side, you're looking at just the personnel cost, looking at a breakdown from the bottom line, looking at wages, defined benefit contributions, because we do have a pensionable system. I think that's one of the reasons why we are successful in recruiting and retaining talent pool, but there's a cost to that. And then, your other fringe costs. So that's the benefits that we offer those recruits and those officers that we retain. And you can see the substantial increase from left to right from 2021. That is a supply and demand problem, in my view, that all of the cities collectively and all the townships collectively have a demand for the next-gen police and fire departments. And we have fewer candidates to fill those positions. So it really increases the bargaining power in the cost of those services, much more because it's basic supply and demand. You look at really the substantial costs in looking at the red. So on the red, you're looking at defined benefits, now $6.2 million. That's going to continue. We will continue to have workforce turnover across police and fire departments. Again, that's consistent across all departments. Royal Oak's not unique to that. But that's just the nature of workforce transition. So we're in a transition cycle. We've been talking about the silver tsunami since I was in college, and now I have silver, and the tsunami is now coming. So it's about, well, I'm not going to say how much later that is. That would daylight me, but it's a bit later than they were saying. So then, on the nature of police services. So the nature of services is also growing more complex, and the demand is growing as well. So we know that having licensed mental health co-respond with your officers is the correct next-gen way to go. We have, we are one of four communities who are in a pilot partnership with Oakland County Health Network to actually provide co-respondents dedicated for Royal Oak, Ferndale, Hazel Park, and Madison Heights. Those two co-responders coordinate with all cities throughout the course of a week. And each city has their own guaranteed time, right? And so, you look at the call volume and you look at Royal Oak. This launched in September, and Royal Oak is taking the lion's share of those call volumes. No one's angry with us yet. But I would imagine what I'm saying is the demand for service is clearly there. Of the partnership, we're all paying the same. And right now, Royal Oak has eaten the lion's share of those calls. I will leave it to the chief to comment on the efficacy of that program, but I've heard nothing but positive things and a desire to sustain that program, if not increase that program. In terms of fire, we have 63 FTEs there. It's really a similar story, looking at the growth pattern. We have fewer firefighters than police officers. We have about 99 in our police department and 57 in our fire department. It's the same thing. You can look at the left chart, kind of shows you the pension contributions and how that's changed. That's up about $1.4 million in the last four years. That's going to happen when you have workforce transition because there's going to be people drawing on their pensions, right? And that's just what you're seeing. We've had a total of 30, I did ask Human Resources to provide the statistic. We've had 30 retirements over the past three years. Looking on the right side, it's the same thing. We provide that same stacked bar chart to kind of show you at the bottom the difference in wages. You're looking at about $1.5, $1.6 million more in collective wages since you came out of the pandemic. And you're seeing the same trends across pension as well and the fringe benefits that we offer those employees to work here. So discussion points, and this is in my transmitted letter, which is in the packet. I pulled that out to make it more straightforward. Why I did that millage analysis and why I showed that to you is the bottom line. Because the bottom line is the general fund, the public safety fund is really only funding itself 31%. That is going to, with the way costs are going, if we don't increase FTE count, if the police and fire department continue to stay at their current levels, this trend will just continue. And so, you will likely see those contracts continue to rise as they're rising with all of our neighbors, as we compete for the same talent pool. It will become organically costlier. And so, that millage, if it's funding itself 31% today, that proportion is going to continue to go downward. So it is not sustainable when I look two years out and that millage is set to expire. This shows you the total amount capped right now. So the current original authorized millage amount on the left, the police and fire by charter is, we can only raise 3.975. We can only levy 3.975 mils to fund public safety, meaning our cap will never get us beyond approximately where we are today, which is about 31, 32%. What I would say is public safety deserves a higher cap. And so, I would recommend that should the city push to renew its public safety millage when it expires, we shouldn't be, we should be in position to respond to the market. Right now, we're not in position to respond to the market. So if you increase the cap to six mils, that would put you in a position to, when it expires, to have more flexibility in what millage you want to levy. If you don't adjust that, you can only roll up to the 3.975 where the current charter is today. So how do we do that? We do that with a November ballot initiative. That would be my recommendation. It would be the cleanest forward-thinking thing to do. And that's really a charter amendment increasing the maximum amount of mils to be levied for public safety to six mils. There's no actual tax increase. This is adjusting your capacity to levy mils for public safety purposes by the charter. And that is really it. So it's an enabling legislation. I can't speak to the confusion of that. I can do what I can to make that as straightforward as possible. This is my management recommendation, looking two years out and looking at the cost trends and knowing that public safety is a priority for this commission, for myself and the community. Discussion points from the commission. This is a snapshot of the schedule. So potentially, there's a June 9 public hearing. It would be the adoption of the fiscal 26 as proposed. I'll take your questions.
Questions from Mr. Gachow. Kristin Hunt?
Well, thank you for this presentation. Thank you to you and your team for putting together this budget or proposed budget. You know, quite often, we hear when we're looking at the budgets, you know, well, this is how we've done it in the past, so this is how we're going to do it now. And I didn't see that here, thought outside of the box when proposing funding for initiatives that we have an interest in, that our community has an interest in. So I thank you for that. As it relates to the DPS motor pool replacement, I understand that Director Yee is putting together a policy. And it's expected that after that, he'll come back to us or to you or somewhere with regards to the motor pool and replacements of the motor pool. Is it anticipated that that would be as a budget amendment? Or are we looking at that for next year, in next year's budget?
I'll allow the director, if he wants to speak to that. But I would envision it as our priority is making sure that when we bring the capital plan in the fall, that the policy is ready and we can make fresh vehicle projections then. I do believe the director can justify this, qualify this better than I can. But I believe the motor pool is also an internal service fund, not the general fund. And I do believe it has available capacity if an emergency arises.
Thank you. Yes, it is in fact an internal service fund. And I do envision requesting some funding upcoming in terms of a budget adjustment to purchase vehicles that will meet the standard that we put forward.
Do you have any idea about how long it would take before you have completed your policy review and putting together a policy?
I would love to jump right into it. But I do also want to work with the sustainability manager that we hire, systems manager that we do hire, on putting together a policy that we all can agree with elevates our values and what we want to do here. So I do want to wait till that person's on board so we can work together and make sure. They may have some different ideas or some new things or new technologies or things that maybe I haven't thought of or been aware of. So I do want to work with that person to put forth our best effort.
Thank you. And one more question as it relates to grants. You talked about the CDBG funding being reduced by way of the federal government. There are a number of grants that you mentioned throughout the funding process. Is there any fear of those being not provided by the federal government? And what is the anticipation of, you know, funding those projects if that is not provided?
I don't, and I mentioned this at the workshop, I don't take anything for granted in terms of what is secured funding and not secured funding. And I can give a direct example because the city did have a Department of Energy grant awarded to it for investing, transitioning the Salter Center into a community hub. That funding, we got a notice that that funding is discontinued. And so, we had a cease and desist on that funding. We talked about that at the workshop. So that's an example of a grant project that we thought was secured that we're not able to move forward. And so, we're going to have to pivot that. So moving forward, I don't, I think we're very mindful about the opportunities that we're pursuing right now. We're going to be conservative until we have a better picture of the landscape. But one thing I know that we don't want to do, we want grant fundings to enable opportunities. We don't want to rely on the grant funding. And I know that that's a philosophy from staff.
Thank you.
Kristin Herzog?
Thank you so much for this presentation. And thank you to staff for helping. We had the workshop that was eight hours and you nicely distilled everything into an hour presentation. It's amazing. I think what you've, to even summarize it even in a minute or less, I think this budget really prioritized safety. We see it in IT, water, mobility, the police and fire. And it also gives value to residents in multiple ways. But really, I want to highlight the rental program. I think that's really innovative for our residents. I also want to push on or highlight the Community Resiliency Hub that we had a grant for that could help our community in crisis. And so, I'm very disappointed in losing that funding because of politics at the federal level. But my question, I guess, is, or something that came out of our workshop that I thought was really surprising was that our infrastructure is old in that fixture and that we've had about 50-ish water main breaks this year, and we're on track for 100, which is exceedingly larger amount than we have in previous years. And this is due to climate and aging infrastructure and that we have to plan for, from our engineers saying that we should be planning for that for the future. So I just wanted to make those few comments from what we learned.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Gachow. There is so much in here, so many epic projects, capital projects, millions and millions of dollars. My question is about a very small part of this, and that is short-term rental management software. At any given time, if you look at Airbnb, I don't know, there's less than 50 units available for rental on a sample weekend, for example, in September. Will this software also manage all of our rentals? Because we did pass or revise our ordinance here within the past year to allow for greater scrutiny of all rentals, including short-term rentals. Will it embrace those as well?
I think the software is specific to the short-term rental platform. But I did talk to the building official and the current economic development director. And we did talk about looking at long-term rentals. We do think we have an opportunity to take a second look at how we're approaching that program. And I think, I think we're going to look at it, but I don't have a definitive answer for you right now.
Okay, good, but just so it's on your radar.
Yep.
Thank you.
Kristin Chezam?
I just want to build off a comment that Commissioner Herzog made regarding the vulnerability of our water system because it is so old. And we do have the millage to repair the roads. So I appreciate your, you know, forethought and let's coordinate this work. Let's do what we need to do to make sure that we can be proactive and not, instead of having to constantly respond to water main breaks, which might entail more disruption to our residents' overtime pay for the cost of overtime pay to our staff, as well as having staff potentially working in, you know, really uncomfortable conditions, you know, freezing cold winter nights and things like that. So I appreciate your thoughtfulness on that. And one of the other commissioners made a comment about thinking outside the box. And I see that in multiple instances throughout this budget that, again, we spent a lot of time last month going through in detail. And I appreciate, I appreciate that, the work that you and your office have done. So thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add, thank you, Mr. Gachow. I know that eight-hour session was very long and it took probably at least 100 times more of those hours collectively for staff to go in, prioritize, and get all the numbers together so we can have a plan. And that's what we have here is the plan. Of course, a lot of uncertainty at the federal level. We're not sure where some of these things are going to go. But the conservative approach here, I think, is worthy at this moment in time and this juncture. And to build off what Commissioner Herzog said, when I look at this in just a real high level, clearly, we're focused on safety, we're focused on aging in place, and of course, quality of life. And being up here for 14 years now, this is the first time I can say this budget really looks to be proactive as opposed to reactive. And I think we've found ourselves in the past, when we have a reactive budget, you know, we're just scrambling. know, we're just scrambling to fix problems. And here, the example given, hey, if we're lifting up a road, let's fix the water mains. We've had a lot of water main breaks for all, you know, aging infrastructure, the impact of climate on the stress on these systems. And, you know, by being proactive, we're going to save money. In public safety, we're going to save lives. And of course, we're going to save a lot of headaches and consternation and use of folks' time. So, and I do agree with you, and we have always had this mentality too. When we get the grant money, we can't rely on grants to run our operation here. They help us enable things that we really want to do. We can't use ARPA dollars to fund continuing operations. We use it to fund one-time projects. And so I really think sticking to that over the years and sticking to that sort of mentality in this budget is going to set us up for a strong future. So thank you. Okay. All right, that's just the presentation tonight. And then on June 9th, we'll have a public hearing.
Yes.
And folks, if you've listened to this, you have questions, concerns, you want to reach out to us, you want to talk about it at public comment, you want to talk about it at the hearing, please let us know. And hopefully, before June 9th, we get some additional feedback from everybody. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gachow. All right, that brings us to item seven, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Macy? Motion by Commissioner Macy is our second. Second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussing on the agenda. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. We've established an agenda. All right, that brings us to number eight, which is public comment. So a few ground rules about public comment before we get started. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, whether or not it's on the agenda. As such, comments be directed to the commission as a whole, but not to individual commissioners. The city has made it easier for you to request follow-up on any issue. Simply scan the QR code you see displayed or sign in with staff at the lobby at the meeting tonight before speaking at public comment. A lot of questions are asked sometimes. We don't know how to get you the answer if we don't know who you are or how to get a hold of you. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, you'll state your name and address. Please be mindful, the City Commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic. And we have a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, please make sure your issue has been made clear when submitting either the QR code or when you sign in with staff. Please note, the City Commission typically doesn't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and will address questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer to the proper city department if the matter isn't scheduled on tonight's agenda. Staff are also taking notes and will look into matters as needed. Any public comments the City Commission or manager respond post-meeting will utilize the contact information on the public comment sign-in, so please make sure to double-check your information for its accuracy. This also holds us accountable to making sure we answer your questions as well. So you have the QR option. You can always email us and you have the ability to sign in with your email, telephone number, so we can get back to you. So with that, I'm going to start with Mr. Tom Togwiler because I know he has a public comment slash announcement to make. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. My name is Tom Togwiler, 1018 Longfellow. I am here representing the Royal Oak Historical Society. We are a private organization operating a museum at Webster and Crooks. Our organization thinks of ourselves as the keeper of Royal Oak's history, and we really are. I invite everybody to come and see us at our museum during our open hours of Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00. Also, I am here to invite the community, the commission, everyone in the staff of the City of Royal Oak, people here in all the community, and invite to our annual pancake breakfast on Memorial Day at the farmer's market. We will be serving the best pancakes in town from 7:00 to 11:00 a.m., and I hope you can make it. So I'd like to drop some flyers off with the city's clerk.
Yeah, yeah, please do so, Tom. And thank you to you and the Historical Society for doing that every year. And, you know, I think my son absolutely agrees. He's a pancake connoisseur, and he agrees they're the best in Royal Oak, so. All right. All right, we'll pass those down. Okay, who's next? Yes, sir.
Mark.
Mark. I misspoke.
No, thank you. Mark Sackit, General Manager, Royal Oak Leprechauns. Opening day signifies like a rebirth, like a start of a new season. In Major League Baseball, opening day, we have 30 teams. They all have a chance to win, to become the best in the world. The Royal Oak Leprechauns begin their season this, well, one week from tonight. Our first two series are against two of the top teams in our league, which is Kalamazoo Growlers and the Traverse City Pit Spitters. Both of those teams will be coming in for two-game series. It's not only opening day, it's also the opening week, as we have six straight home games at Memorial Park. A week from Tuesday and a week from Thursday, we'll be bringing in 500 kids for each game that begins at 11:00 a.m., so early game those days. We'll be hosting students from Royal Oak Elementary Schools from Northwood, Adams, Upton, and also students from Royal Oak Middle School. So it should be a very fun day. Hopefully, our weather will be good. For opening day, I hope Mayor Mike, hope you get a chance to respond to our email. Hopefully, maybe we'll see you there. If not, we're going to have to call in relief. Commissioner Hunt has already volunteered for that, so look out. On Saturday, May 31st, we'll be celebrating another opening day. The Royal Oak Sandlot League has their opening day. The Royal Oak Leprechauns will be providing the youth a free clinic during that day, a two-hour clinic. We will also be providing all Royal Oak Sandlot League families free admission to the ballgame that night. And then also, that same night, ESPN Plus will be televising the game, so it's a national recognition for the park. We're excited about that. We have a lot going on at the Lucky Corner. We're currently making a lot of repairs to the park as the grandstands are in rough shape, but I think we'll be ready for that. We hope you have a chance to come out to the ballpark and see all that we do for the community. And City Manager Joe, if you're available for May 31st, if you don't get nervous on ESPN Plus, we'd like to have you for a first day of ceremonial first pitch. So consider that. Okay, you're going to shoot hoops. So anyway, so thank you, and we look, hopefully, we'll see you all out at the ballpark this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Sackit. All right, who's next? We'll go up here in the front, Plaid.
Thank you. Trish Oliver, Royal Oak resident since 1986. The one-family, single-family residential land use category with its protections has still been eliminated from the master plan, instead substituting the term neighborhood residential, which is code for allowing a variety of new high-density rental units, including duplexes, apartment buildings, and accessory dwelling units that are currently not allowed in one-family zones. In fact, multifamily and single-family have both been replaced by the catch-all term neighborhood residential. The master plan draft should not be approved until single-family zoning is placed back in the master plan, not just in the text, but in the future land use categories and in the future land use map, and not just leave it for the zoning. In addition, the updated master plan with the typus corrected wasn't posted to the website in enough time for people to review it. It should not be approved tonight because of that. We should have at least a couple more weeks to review it. On Friday, a Royal Oak Tribune article confirmed that Oakland County Commission Chair and fellow Royal Oaker Dave Woodward is working as a consultant for Sheets, a Pennsylvania gas station chain, to bring a location to the already overburdened 14-mile and Coolidge intersection despite overwhelming public outcry. Affected neighbors have wondered why Royal Oak politicians would welcome Sheets, which is generally thought to be too big for the site, after Madison Heights, Farmington, Canton, and other cities have denied it. Woodward's fellow county commissioners, Kristen Nelson of Waterford Township and Charlie Cavell of Ferndale, have proposed financial disclosure and ethics rules. Nelson said, quote, "It is crucial that elected and appointed officials take proactive steps to ensure our residents that decisions are based on merit and the community's best interest, not partisan agendas or personal financial gain." "The question is, how is Woodward allowed to have a personal side business that affects the county's business?" Nelson asked. In a related matter, Royal Oakers want to know why Woodward proteges Royal Oak Mayor Mike Fournier and city planning commissioners have persisted in inserting high-density developments next to single-family homes despite extensive public outcry, including 42 units at 4704 South Rochester Road, zoned for just 16, 24 units at 723 North Main, zoned for just two, and waiving 100% of the required 81 parking spaces for a 10-story building at 505 South Lafayette, to mention just a few of the high-density projects pushed through in the last two years in advance of the increased density that the removal of single-family from the master plan will bring. One more minute.
Thank you. No, Ms. Oliver, you have, the time is up. We're going to go with who's next, okay?
Similar to Nelson expressing ethical concerns about Chairman Woodward, it is past time-
All right, we're going to take a quick recess here until we can abide by the rules.
It is past time for Royal Oak politicians to hear us when we say that it is also-
About the rules, every person that wants to speak at public comment has three minutes, okay? There's a lot of people here tonight that want to speak. We want to be respectful of everybody in this room. So there, folks, folks, remember how these meetings work. This is not a football game. This is an official proceeding, okay? So we have to be respectful of everybody in the room, okay? So let's make sure that we abide by the rules. We don't speak out of order. And when our three minutes are up, we have to yield our time to the next person that wishes to speak, okay? That's how all of this works. We have to have an orderly process here. We all on the same page? All right. Who's next? I see a hand in the back. Yes.
Hello, I'm Alex Morford. I've been a Royal Oak resident for about six years now. I'm also a member of Y M B Oakland County. I'm here tonight to share my support for the proposed master plan. The proposed master plan envisions a future Royal Oak where some property owners, primarily those who own property on major roads, could build a bit more housing by right. It does not change anything directly, just proposes some additional options of what can be built in these limited locations. More housing is a good thing. We have a housing affordability crisis in this country, and allowing small multifamily homes for people who are interested in living in them can reduce housing costs by increasing supply. Right now, a significant amount of Royal Oak's new multifamily housing goes through the planned unit development process, and small projects are rarely presented because of the cost and unpredictability inherent to the process. If we create straightforward and reasonable requirements for multifamily housing as this proposed master plan suggests, then we will encourage development of smaller and less expensive multifamily homes that are similar to what we already have throughout many neighborhoods in Royal Oak. The changes in this proposed master plan are very modest. In 2000, Royal Oak downzoned about 600 lots, and most of those aren't even being shown as neighborhood edge on the future land use map, so we aren't planning to bring back the right to build housing that was taken from these property owners. My sources for the downzoning details are the Daily Tribune Archives, specifically newspapers from October 4th, 1998, and May 25th, 2000, and City Commission Meeting Minutes, specifically June 19th and July 10th, 2000. I'd also like to mention that downzoning resulted in the single-family overlay, and I would like the commission to please review that ordinance language, specifically Chapter 770, Section 58, Subsections A3A1 and A3A2, which discuss so-called "critical public health, safety, and general welfare objectives," but I find the language does not reflect the inclusive community I'm proud to call home. Hopefully, all will consider rewriting that section while reviewing zoning ordinances for the master plan implementation. Lastly, as someone who walks bikes, drives, and rides the bus in Royal Oak, I appreciate the proposed master plan's focus on improving travel around the city for everyone. I'm very excited for bus stop updates and safer ways for pedestrians to cross our major roads, like more refuge islands. Hopefully, both of these will be part of the upcoming improvements to Rochester Road, especially since the Rochester bus only runs once an hour. I would really like to see some bus stop, or some benches at the bus stops for accessibility and comfort. In conclusion, I believe this proposed master plan will have a positive impact on our community, and I look forward to its approval and unsuccessful implementation. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we're struggling to be respectful. If we're going to have some emotional outbursts, we can regroup later if we need to. Are we going to be respectful of everyone? Okay. Yes.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Barnhart, and I live at 5040 Thorncroft. My family has lived in Royal Oak for 75 years. My father was raised in Royal Oak. I was born and raised in Royal Oak. My husband was born and raised in Royal Oak. Our children were born in Royal Oak and love being raised here as well. My youngest son attends Royal Oak High School. Our children were born in Royal Oak and love being raised here. Our sons want to raise their future children in Royal Oak. As you can see, Royal Oak has been a big point of pride within our lives, but that's just until recently. The fact that you're still entertaining the idea of allowing a Sheetz mega gas station and car wash to be built next to a cemetery has severed our pride in Royal Oak. I'll start by mentioning that the traffic is already horrible and dangerous at 14 Mile and Coolidge. I can mention that gas stations leak toxins into our environment. I'll also mention that Upton Elementary, where I and my sons and my husband went to school, sorry, it's only a block away from Sheetz. There are children that I see walking to school that go across 14 Mile and Coolidge. I see high schoolers biking down 14 Mile. My son was hit by a car at 14 Mile and Crooks and was taken by ambulance. It is extremely dangerous at 14 Mile already. My son missed months of school. He also suffers from a lot of anxiety from it. So as you're willing to create more dangerous traffic for our families in Royal Oak, I just can't believe that this is true. This is a city that we've loved for a very long time. I also want to go into more depth about the fact that families need to have a cemetery to go to that is peaceful. You're going to put a cemetery, or put a gas station right next to a cemetery, directly adjacent to that Sheetz location is the cemetery where people go to mourn. If you allow this mega gas station, drive-through, and car wash to be built, you're saying, yes, I'm willing to take away the sanctuary and peace of that cemetery. If you allow this gas station, drive-through, and car wash to be built, you're saying that this does not matter to you. Money matters to you. Please do not let Royal Oak be the city that says yes to Sheetz when so many other cities have said no. Please don't let Royal Oak be the city that tells these families that money is more important than their peace in times of sadness. Stand tall and say, not our city, not our watch.
Thank you. All right, who's next? I see Mr. How- All right, I see what we're doing. You clever foxes, I see what we're doing. Let's remember that we're not going to clap, because if somebody has an opposing opinion, we don't want to make them feel like they're not welcome to come up to public comment. Okay, folks, folks, I don't make all the rules. Rules are adopted by this body. We have to enforce the rules, okay? So I need you to make sure you're abiding by the rules, not just because they're there for good reason out of respect for our fellow citizens, but they're also there to have an orderly meeting, okay? All right? Mr. Halleck? I called any, right?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Tom Halleck. I was a former city commissioner. I was the commissioner rep on the planning commission for four years. Later, I was appointed to the planning commission and chaired it for nine. I'm here to discuss this master plan, which is a complete farce. The intent of hiring this company was to eliminate single-family zoning, because that's what they do. They specialize in that, so you hired them. What's the first thing they did? They eliminated single-family out of the master plan. And I don't want to hear any nonsense about, this is the master plan, this isn't zoning. Your zoning is supposed to match your master plan. If it doesn't, you've blown it under Michigan law. So that's nonsense. The second thing is, is when you start talking about what you can allow in neighborhoods, this is a simple fact. If your neighborhood has designated single-family, the only thing that can go in your neighborhood is single-family. When your neighborhood is now neighborhood residential, anything can go in your neighborhood, any form, anything. Anybody who says otherwise is flat-out lying to you, because that is not accurate in the least. The only time it would be is when they get to the zoning, where they will supposedly preserve it. But if you call it single-family, you don't need to do that. So the only reason you're doing this is to remove the single-family and then go to the form zoning queues, which you have in the master plan. And the form zoning queues are in there talking about making things match the existing structures within the existing neighborhoods. You don't need that, again, for single families. You only need that if you're stuffing in duplexes, triplexes, multifamilies, because you're going to make them look like a bungalow. So what do you care if it's now six people living next door, or you're six units and no parking? You don't care, because it looks like a bungalow. Your neighborhood's still the same. We haven't changed it. That's what form zoning is, and you've got queues in there to do exactly that, because otherwise that language wouldn't be there, and you would still be calling it single-family, even in the master plan. The fact that you're not simply makes you untrustworthy in the least on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halleck. All right, yes, Mayor in the aisle.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Lewis, 4122 Grandview Road. I have two questions for the commission, one of which is specific to the mayor. But first, I find it appalling you didn't admonish the crowd for clapping at the presentations. At the top of the meeting, for the Mothers Against Gun Violence and the Veterans Ruck Walk, both very honorable points in the agenda, but you do admonish clapping when it offends you. So I'd appreciate, in my question, a clarity regarding the fair application of the rules. Shall I pause my time while you answer that question? No clarity on the rules? Okay, moving on. Next, I'd request to pose one question at a time with a pause in time, again, for answer for the effective communication in this two-way communication. First, I'd like to request each commissioner confirm or deny whether there was a closed-door meeting occurring during the recess in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Can I begin with you? Anyone?
Ma'am, you have to direct your comments to the commission as a whole.
Okay, would anyone like to speak up first? Thank you for clarifying the rule. No? Going once, going twice? Okay. Anyway, second, Mr. Mayor, can you please confirm or deny, or shall I address the whole commission? It's really meant for the mayor. Anyway, trying to abide by the rules, that you acted with bias when opening the floor for questions. You looked right at this person, twice, not once, but twice, but then looked away, searching desperately for someone, anyone else to call upon to avoid calling on her, whether for sexist or political reasons. Can you confirm or deny? I assume I spoke clearly, loudly enough?
Excuse me. She has the floor.
I do have the floor, but I will yield to anyone on the commission to answer any of my questions.
She has the floor.
Also inappropriate that my questions are not being answered, and that clapping was accepted and encouraged for items on the agenda that were deemed respectful.
All right, who's next? Anybody else? I see a hand back there. Come on up.
My name is Ellen Gendler. I'm a homeowner in Royal Oak. We moved here two and a half years ago because we loved that there were areas, like Chair Kassada said, we could walk to and from our home. Oops, sorry. There were areas, like Chair Kassada said, businesses we could walk to from our home. And I'm very excited that this master plan encourages more of that. In truth, I believe it should go further. I believe that we should have ADUs by right in the city. I believe that we should have a network of protected bike lanes across the city. I believe we should have more- I believe we should have more and improved crosswalks. And I believe we should have faster implementation of the science-backed road diets that are going in currently. But I understand that this is a community of multiple perspectives and that this master plan is a compromise among those perspectives. Recent articles have said how many people are moving here to Oakland County, to Royal Oak, people with the same good taste that all of us have. We need to make room for those people, and this plan does a good job of finding places to encourage more housing while keeping the parts of the city that we all love. Therefore, I encourage the commission to adopt the draft master plan.
If you have an issue, you can talk to our community engagement specialist and she'll relay it to our team, okay? Thank you. All right. Who's next? I see a hand over here.
Janice Wagman. Over the past months, I've repeatedly asked a simple, yet critical question. What cities, similar in size, population, and climate to Royal Oak, have successfully implemented the kinds of policies proposed in this master plan? Did those cities achieve their goals, and if so, what data supports their success? Regarding the rezoning and affordability, we all support housing that meets the needs of our residents. But without firm affordability requirements or clear anti-speculation policies, rezoning risks benefiting developers and investors, not the people who actually live and work here. Zoning reform alone won't solve affordability. In fact, if implemented carelessly, it could drive prices higher. Regarding accessory dwelling units, you cited ADUs as a solution for affordable housing, but in other cities, what percentage of ADUs actually become short-term rentals like Airbnbs? Because Airbnbs don't help teachers, postal workers, or first responders find homes in Royal Oak. Do we have data on how many ADUs in peer cities actually provide long-term affordable housing? Regarding road diets and bike lanes, many communities have reversed road diets plans after public backlash and increased congestion. Did you know some cities have removed bike lanes entirely because they proved ineffective or even unsafe? In fact, studies show unprotected bike lanes can be more dangerous than having none at all. Have you looked at post-implementation safety data here where we've had them installed in Royal Oak? Public transportation, similar question. Is it being used or are cars still overwhelmingly the preferred means of transportation? The demand for data, not assumptions, before we add more housing, where is the actual local data on how many of the hundreds of new housing units that we've added are truly affordable? Where is the data on traffic safety? Have vehicle, bike, and pedestrian accidents increased or decreased in road diet areas in our city? And the final thought, this master plan represents a significant investment of time, energy, and taxpayer dollars, but too many questions remain unanswered, or worse, unasked. Due diligence has not been done. We cannot afford to rubber-stamp speculative ideas without hard data, proven examples, and a clear understanding of how these changes will truly benefit Royal Oak. And since we've got the budget on the same menu, or on the same agenda tonight, what I read and what I heard is we can look forward to another increase in our water bills along with a ballot proposal to increase the safety mileage by sixty-seven percent, while the city wants to add eight new employee positions to the payroll. Thank you.
All right, who's next?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Harrison, resident of Woodward Side subdivision. I want to talk about the master plan and also the proposed budget. The master plan, so exactly what will a form-based code mean for what we now know as a single-family-zoned area in our Woodward Side subdivision? Be open with us. Specifically, what is your vision for Woodward Avenue narrowing and commercial/residential development? Narrowing Woodward Avenue would be a disaster. Recently, the East Lane was closed at Thirteen Mile Road for road construction. The traffic was backed up for three-quarters of a mile way past Webster. Now, the internal subdivision itself, the missing middle urbanization, our subdivision already includes a wide variety of income levels and age distribution contrary to your allegations. We have a right to equal opportunity, not equal outcome. That's a socialist concept. Is it true that there is a task force looking at alternative uses for the golf course property? If so, when and where are their meetings I would like to attend? The proposed budget. My concerns are always the general fund balance as a percent of expenditures and the pension fund balance as a percent of fully funded. The general fund balance projection follows a typical going out-of-business curve that I've spoken about many times. However, it's four hundred and sixty-five pages, I cannot find the pension fund balance as a percent of fully funded. You previously bonded to increase the percent funded from fifty-six percent to seventy percent, and then you borrowed from the fund back down to fifty-six percent again. So, you borrowed the money that you bonded and you're paying interest on the bond. That doesn't sound like somebody that has a Masters in Business Administration from Notre Dame. Thank you.
All right, who's next? See a hand in the back?
I'm Nancy Sumner, and I've lived in Royal Oak since nineteen seventy-eight. And as a citizen and taxpayer and homeowner of the city of Royal Oak, I feel the mayor and city council are pushing through the master plan, the building of Sheetz at Fourteen Mile and Coolidge, and road diets without properly advising and polling the citizens to see if the majority is in agreement with what is planned. Most people are busy with their daily lives, and they don't go to the city's webpage and see what's going on. You know, they have kids, they have a job, and they have a life outside of looking at the Royal Oak webpage. And I also noticed that the survey on the road diet, those questions don't truly ask people clear questions like, do they agree with the road diets? Do they agree with the master plan? There's nothing that just jumps out at you. I don't want Sheetz built at Fourteen Mile and Coolidge. I don't agree with removing single-family zoning from the master plan. Since the master plan affects all the citizens of Royal Oak, why not put it on the ballot as an advisory question? The citizens would be able to answer whether they want single-family zoning removed from the master plan, and that way, the mayor and city commissioners could proceed with the vote based on the response from the advisory question. I also think that road diets on the ballot should be on the ballot because this affects all of us. We have to drive these roads every single day, and when you're trying to get to the hospital from my house and have the hospital take, normally it's like five minutes, but with all the traffic, it can take anywhere from fifteen to twenty minutes. What if it's an emergency and you're trying to get somebody to the hospital in your car right away because you don't want to wait for an emergency vehicle at your house? With regards to Sheetz, the citizens living in the area should also be advised by the city via mailing of postcards so they are all aware of what your plans are. Many of the people in the area are not aware of this, and they should be able to vote on it due to its increased traffic, noise, and building close to an elementary school. What are you afraid of by not giving the people the opportunity to vote on something that affects everyone?
Thank you. All right, who's next?
Good evening. My name is Thomas Horman. I live at nine fourteen Genesee Avenue. I moved to Royal Oak in nineteen seventy-eight. Like many of my friends and neighbors in Royal Oak, I have read the draft Master Plan 2050. And like many of my friends and neighbors, I've become increasingly dismayed about the proposal to replace our current zoning of single-family and multiple-family residential with a new zoning designation, neighborhood residential. As noted by Planning Commissioner Kasada, this represents a de facto rezoning of about eighty-five percent of the area of our city. That's a lot of postcard notifications that are gonna have to be sent out. I realize the draft master plan also includes many references to actions to preserve and enhance neighborhood character. Unfortunately, in recent years, our elected and appointed officials have approved variances, rezonings, and planned unit developments that have neither preserved nor enhanced the character of our neighborhoods. If this has happened already with our current master plan and our current zoning districts and ordinances, what can we expect to happen with a new master plan and subsequent zoning requirements? The simplest means of preserving the character of our neighborhoods is to keep them zoned as single-family residential and multiple-family residential. So-called enhancements, that we've been told, as exemplified by variances, rezonings, and PUDs, should be confined to neighborhood nodes and edges, mixed-use corridors, and the downtown core and the Woodward corridor. I guess I can summarize everything by saying, protect Royal Oak, preserve our neighborhoods, maintain our current single-family and multiple-family residential zoning. Thank you.
All right, I see a hand right back there.
I'm Gina Olson. I live on Sheridan Drive, just four houses off of Woodward. Just one question about the master plan. Of course, you won't answer it, but if changing it from single-family designation won't make any difference, why change it? Why do you change the language to allow our neighborhoods to be changed? And I would just like to make a comment. I'm relatively new to Royal Oak compared to some of these folks, but I've been here since, what, two thousand and ten, I think. I am embarrassed by the way that this meeting is conducted and by the disrespect that this commission shows to all these people who've been sitting here since seven-thirty tonight and the fact that you arranged the agenda so that we would have to sit here. You know why we're here. So, why would we have to sit here for almost three hours to have our say? Thank you.
All right, who's next? See a hand over here.
Oh, man, looks like that big sign is kind of bouncing around people back there. Hey.
John and Kathy Nellis. We've been in Royal Oak since nineteen ninety-one. Proposed letter for city to send all residents. Dear resident, the city of Royal Oak has recently completed and approved the new Master Plan 2050 that includes a revised future land use plan. Pursuant to the provisions of these documents and the next step to amend the zoning ordinance, your property has been rezoned from the current one-family residential zoning to neighborhood residential zoning. We have also eliminated multi-family zoning and blended this with single-family zoning into the newly-formed neighborhood residential zoning. Neighborhood residential, the previous legal zoning protections of your property defined in one-family residential zoning have been eliminated, and the following added types of housing density will now be allowed in your community. Multi-family units, this will include both apartments and condominiums, townhomes, duplexes, accessory dwelling units. Neighborhood edge, should your previously-zoned one-family residential property now be in one of the new neighborhood edge areas, additional allowable density changes will be promoted. For your reference, an example would be the forty-two-unit apartment project now under construction at four-seven-zero-four Rochester Road. Unified development ordinance, regarding our outdated project approval process that we have used, we have adopted a new unified development ordinance. This now allows us to streamline and improve zoning approvals. It will promote housing diversity, duplexes, multi-family units, and ADUs. It will allow us to bypass the ZBA, PUDs, and other lengthy approval processes that include a resident input and checks and balances. Should you have any issues with any of these zoning changes, please note that the city's upcoming election on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five, will feature openings for the mayor's position and three commissioner seats. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Nancy Poprowski. I'm worried that people are losing what's essential for hope. There's a new book called Toxic Empathy. Empathy is toxic? Whoa. What have we come to? Empathy, ability to understand the feelings of another like Gandhi, MLK, Lincoln, Harriet Tubman, Jesus, they all did this for a living. The practice of empathetic and honest leadership is disappearing throughout the world and here. The love of money and lack of transparency, until caught, are going hand in hand. From the government hiding a president's declining cognitive issues that could jeopardize our safety like Biden and Reagan, to presidents accepting lavish gifts from a Saudi prince whose regime murdered a beloved journalist in cold blood. Children's necessities like health care and education are being slashed, while six-hundred billion dollars in tax cuts may be enacted for billionaires. Where will the greed stop? Can we make it stop, even if it's in small doses like here in Royal Oak with the master plan and Sheetz? We must use empathy and our conscience before greed. The master plan in reality is a form of gentrification by promoting new luxury apartments, tearing down small affordable homes, and building or replacing them with Bigfoots and mainly luxury apartments and condos. A new phrase has come out from Claussen and Ferndale residents telling their community and officials, "Don't Royal Oak me." How embarrassing. They're afraid of expensive overdevelopment and cement like here. Why aren't leaders listening? Because developers come first. Why would an official argue that a lousy sandwich in the middle of the night at Sheetz is more important than traffic and neighborhood safety and neighborhood preservation and the fact that gas station and car washes are invading everywhere? I will remind you what the emergency employee at Beaumont said about Sheetz. I save lives for a living, and it would be totally selfish of me to expect people to give up their safety and great neighborhood for a lousy sandwich in the middle of the night I could have made myself. In conclusion, Sheetz is all about money, not neighbors. So, again, I urge you, please, if you are truly devoted to your neighbors, to quit overdeveloping per the master plan and also vote down a fourteen-billion-dollar monopoly and destroy smalling business in its path that hurt neighbors and that have to deal with the dangerous intersection and unneeded gas station car wash. Please, just because it's the trend to sell out these days doesn't mean Royal Oak can't be unique and ethical and break this nasty trend of selling out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poprowski. Yep, Mike.
City Commission, Mr. Mayor. Mike Thompson, Lawson Park Homeowners Association. I was at the planning commission approval a few weeks ago, and I thought there were some inaccuracies and misconceptions at that meeting. Number one, it was said that this is just a master- Number one, it was said that this is just a master plan, don't worry about it. It's not changing zoning, and it won't change anything right away. To me, master plan, okay? It's going to follow zoning ordinance changes, it's going to change a lot of things, so it's, we can't downplay that. Number two, it was said that, oh, it's an election year, that's why everyone's showing up. So this is the most radical planning change since Royal Oak's been around, what this could conceivably change with the fabric of neighborhoods in the city. It's a big deal. Number three, we're still, the master plan, you're saying it's protecting single-family, and Chairman Casada said it's protecting single-family. It's been stricken from the very document. There is no single-family, there's no multifamily, it's been put into the blender for neighborhood residential zoning. So I don't see, you know, why we're protecting single-family. You're saying one thing, and if you read the document, the document says something else. The document's going to get approved, people are going to forget what people said. I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed that two years, there's been no changes in this original draft. Today, I looked up a letter from March of 2023, I wrote, and it's still accurate as far as the same things we're talking about tonight. There's been no acceptance of any of the input of the residents. There's been no debate amongst your members. You all think the same, the planning commission thinks the same, the city commission. Why isn't there like a debate? And I don't agree with you, and let's change this, and let's do this. It's just, I don't understand it. It's not how I think America works. I think tonight you're going to rubber stamp it. I think tomorrow you're going to plan the effort to amend the zoning ordinance to be consistent with the master plan, like Mr. Halleck said, that that's what typically happens. I wish we could take what Chairman Casada said about the 15%, and I wish we could put that into the master plan and put that into the ordinance, because I don't read that anywhere. And I would request that the if and when, and probably when, the city rezones my property from one-family, single-family to neighborhood residential, I hope I have a say in that, and I hope I can legally vote on that, because to me, it's a great loss of privacy, solar exposure, added noise, less green space, sense of community is compromised, loss of quality of life, but potentially property loss of value. So I just, I just don't get it. You need to not combine single-family and go from there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right, who's next? Yes, sir, here on the end.
Dear mayor, commissioners, I'm David Bezinski. I live on Coolidge Highway, 4012. I had prepared some remarks, but then things got a little spicy in here, so I'm going to kind of speak off the cuff. Like many here, I have some issues with the proposed master plan. And I've kind of noticed a theme, that the people who are speaking in opposition to it are generally those who've lived here the longest. The voices in support of it have lived in Royal Oak for all of five minutes. The people whose families have been here for decades, in many cases, you know, 75 years, one person, they are the ones who don't want to see the nature of the community changed so drastically as is proposed in this document. And I'll be fair, there are some things in there that I think would be fine, they would be positive even. But the document taken as a whole represents a massive change to the city. Were these things to be implemented as written, Royal Oak would be unrecognizable 50 years from now. The reason that we all bought our homes here or moved here is because we liked the area. We liked our neighbors, we liked the community, we liked it as it was. And I'm not saying it has to stay that way forever, but change should be gradual, incremental, and not done in such a drastic sweeping departure from what had come in the past. There's talk in the plan about affordable housing, which I fully support, but the plan also talks out of both sides of its mouth. Because while we're going to build apartments that people can rent and make landlords rich, there's nothing in here that promotes condominium ownership. If we're going to encourage build in the city, which I don't know that we need to in the first place, why don't we encourage homeownership instead of something that's just going to make a real estate developer and an apartment management company wealthy? For the vast majority of people in this country, you build your wealth, the bulk of it, by owning a home or a condominium. I've lived here for 20 years. If I had spent all that money on rent, I wouldn't have anything to show for it. I have a house now. I would love for the next generation to be able to do the same in Royal Oak. But if so much of the multifamily housing is just apartments, that money is making somebody else rich. They're not building any equity in their own home. The Sheets parcel, six acres, right at 14 and Coolidge, that's a huge parcel for Royal Oak, six acres. And we want to put a gas station and a car wash on it instead of, what, 100 housing units, 200 housing units you could put there? That's a prime spot to add any kind of multifamily housing you may want, and it would have a limited impact on the traffic in the area, as opposed to a high-traffic business like what's proposed. So I would just like, when you're going forward and you're making these decisions, I'd like you to think about the impact that they have on the people who live outside of downtown, those of us who live north of 12 Mile. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Who's next? See a hand back there?
We've heard so much about this master plan. The information provided can be twisted, exaggerated, derived from experience or for a purpose. Sometimes they are related via word salad, which is very lengthy and services to confuse. Over the last few years, we've heard some of these things from those in charge, like, "We are only looking for land. We are not changing any zoning, only when we need land." That's from DPZ, your guy out there. "Don't be concerned about not having single-family zoning, because nothing will be happening for the next few, till the next several years." That's from the mayor. "You don't have to worry about not having single-family zoning, because developers have too many ordinance difficulties, and it's not likely that they will build in your neighborhood." Does that make you feel safe? Oh, the mayor also. Just remember that, not likely. "How about variance and PUDs? How many ever lose? According to the plan, it protects neighborhood character." You haven't been doing that for a long time, and will probably keep going. "How much would a developer pay for a couple of homes? This is extremely insulting, not to mention the loss of value. What you are doing is sacrificing us for what you don't know. The residents that came here on the meeting of April 14th painted the picture of your future city." Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Who's next?
Kathy Klein, resident of Royal Oak for 30-plus years. I was a business owner in downtown for nine. I'm going to try to keep it brief, maybe even make the three minutes. This plan is not ready to be approved. It has not been posted with the changes that have been made long enough for citizens to review it again, which it will require, because it's hard to know what changes you may have made, but what other changes could have been made that would not be as apparent. I talked to several of my neighbors as I walked the neighborhood this weekend. Six out of the small enclave that I live in had no idea this was going down, and they were outraged. So needless to say, our citizens do not realize what's happening. You remove single-family designation and simply make it residential. Any developer can come in, use the new AI app you're about to put out there, meet all the requirements for whatever residential he wants to put in, and boom, he gets it. The rest of the neighbors around that development will lose out on the opportunity to speak out about it. And I want you to know, I would like to build an ancillary building in my backyard. I plan to grow old here, and I would like to build an ancillary unit for a caregiver to live in while they're caring for me. I don't have children. So I'm not opposed to everything, but the way this has gone down is really unfortunate. And I don't believe that it's meant to preserve the neighbors. I don't think it's meant to provide additional housing. We are a developed community. We moved here for the development that we have. There are plenty of places to do development. You open it up to residential designation, and you are making us, it'll be a free-for-all. Every developer will swoop in, buy all these post-World War II bungalows that they can, insert massive high-density in the middle of neighborhoods. It's not correct, and the citizens do not realize that this is happening. So please do not vote for this tonight. There's plenty of opportunity to vote for it down the road. It needs to be posted longer for the citizens to review. The form-based zoning was initially designed for impoverished communities that had stagnant development. Royal Oak is hardly stagnant. They just can't flip a home for the same amount of profit they used to, so now they want to buy multiples and shove in high-density. That's the concern. Please hear us, do not vote for this current version of the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Who's next? Go on once. Oh, you're next?
I actually live in Claussen, I spoke before. Good evening. I guess I'm here just asking again on behalf of the residents that live on the border of Normandy that had no ability to voice a comment on this, that they're very concerned about this change to the zoning. Yeah, I can't help but see it so clearly that this is such a betrayal to the majority of residents in Royal Oak. There may be a fringe minority that is seeing this as some future upside, but all of them are good people, I think, and in fact, I think are the treasure of your city that you're ignoring en masse. And it's, I think it's your treasure, these people, and they deserve it a little bit better, I think. And I just will close by saying, on this Memorial Day weekend, I really will be wondering, is this what soldiers died for? For the majority to be so ignored and rejected, it's going to be something you might regret for a long time. Take it seriously, there's still time to change it, make a revision. You took the whole map and you took a paint roller to it, you know? Surgical changes might make sense in some places. You have that power, but you won't have it for long. Thank you.
All right. Who's next?
Good evening. Susan Swanson. And the mayor made a statement in a previous meeting that he's never noticed high-rise apartments overshadowing or encroaching on single-family neighborhoods, but I have a tutorial document that clearly indicates pictures that this is an incorrect assumption. So I will provide this for you when I'm done here. I believe that our mayor commissioners need to recognize the biggest factors contributing to citizens' frustration and anger is the fact that you are not truly listening. I mean, how many people have said this? You know, to what our concerns are, as well as we feel exhibiting a lack of respect for our perspective and concerns. Making the statement post-public comment sarcastically stated, "This isn't 1955." Thank you. It was disrespectful, it was ageist, and showed no value for those who have spent many years, or a lifetime, in Royal Oak and have experienced a great deal of change in their lifetimes. And, I mean, they love their community. We love our community. That's why we're all here. And, you know, people felt valued and respected. I can assure you that you would not need police presence, which it appears bails you out of your inability to control a public meeting in addition to recesses. Come on. We would much rather have the police focused on supporting our citizens rather than involved in the politics of government. I would like to request that when you do your post-public comment this evening, Mr. Mayor, that you respond to two questions. Does it not seem contradictory that you support road diets for major roads, when at the same time you're supporting increased population via multiple-unit dwellings? This will increase traffic, it'll further stress parking availability, and create overflow parking into neighborhoods, such as what happened to the building on, I believe Rochester Road, yes, which was zoned for 16 and approved for 42 units? With inadequate parking, where are people going to park? And I believe this is correct, that it's three stories, and there's no elevator.
Folks?
Four. Four stories, and there's no elevator. So forget the senior citizens, trust me, at least in my case, and so that means they can perhaps live on the ground level. So, I mean, that's just one example of, you know, that's currently under construction and, again, on Rochester Road, just south of 14 Mile Road, really, really unfortunate. So, and push for high-rise and more population. Why? Whose idea is this? Why does Royal Oak have to be the sacrificial lamb? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Who's next? If you can hand it to the city clerk, she'll send it down this way.
Bob Stugland, 4404 Rochester Road. You know, I grew up on Genesee Street where you're putting this 42-unit, four-story building, apartment building, no elevators, no window stairways, all the stairways outside, inadequate parking, thanks to one of the commission members who made a motion to reduce the parking, okay? But even at that time, in three different meetings, I asked the commission members up there, "Have you been there? Have you come to 4704 Rochester Road?" Only one person shook their head and said, "Yes, I've been there." Why does no one up here ever talk about when they've been there? Have you been to the Green Lantern? This place was packed with people supporting the Green Lantern, and you had a couple of your timeouts a couple of weeks ago, so everybody left. But why don't you give us a firsthand report that you've been to these places that you're voting on, that you're hurting, the neighborhoods that you're causing this distress? We never hear it. I never hear one of you say, "I was at Green Lantern, I saw the parking there, I saw what's in back of it." Why doesn't that happen? Why didn't I hear anyone talk about Genesee? I grew up on that street. Not one of you. Only one shook their head but didn't elaborate. Three times at this meeting, I wrote up, I brought up page 36 in the master plan, where there's 13 businesses there, and in your rendering for the future, they're all gone, including a church, including a Dairy Queen, including a car repair shop, a party store, a small appliance store, a dentist. None of you said, "I've been there," that's not going to happen. The mayor said, "The Dairy Queen's not going anywhere." You didn't elaborate, why is it there? Is it a misprint? Did you miss that page? Did you not proofread that? That's your master plan! And I'll tell you one more thing, when he took the recess, we had a hell of a town hall meeting.
All right. Who's next? Go on once. Yes, sir, in the back.
You've all had an opportunity to read this already. It was all sent to you by email. My name's Kirk Nims, 821 Park Avenue, which was the spec home for the Anchwood Park subdivision, built in 1920. I've lived there since 2002. On Monday, May 5th, 2025, Mayor Fournier, the city attorney, and the director of Plan Community Development, and all six city commissioners were party to a lengthy written exchange in which I said, "This, at this moment in time, is merely a moment in time to reflect carefully on the language and tones that you build into it," meaning the master plan. It will have impacts on future city commissions and the future- "It will have impacts on future city commissions and the future zoning changes." Mayor Fournier said in his email to the city commissioners in May, "If you are worried about three-story homes, the existing zoning and master plan permit certain heights and lot coverages. We could change that during zoning ordinance discussion." And my point is, at the city focus, we at the city focus on our ordinances to uphold the will of the people in plurality. He pointed to the zoning ordinances to protect our interests in our subdivisions that we have created, that have created our neighborhoods. On September 29th, 2016, a building permit was applied for at 825 West Farnham Avenue. On November 9th, 2016, 825 West Farnham had the building permit issued. Now stands a full three-story home covering a significant portion of the 5,640-square-foot lot with much of the rest of the lot covered in concrete. Concrete that effectively stops the natural dispersal and absorption of water, causing increased storm runoff into the storm drainage systems. This under the current zoning regulations, which certainly appear to have failed to protect the look and feel of this Edgewood Park subdivision neighborhood, which all of our neighbors have been chosen to invest into and live in. Regarding the ZBA, the mere desire of a petitioner for them to be able to overlook Mininger Park while she nurses her yet-onborn child does not feel like an adequate justification to permit the construction of a massive three-story home in a neighborhood of two-story up to 100-year-old homes. We neighbors see this as insufficient merit for such a bold exception to have been granted to the look and feel of the Edgewood Park subdivision. Add to that the insult of the builder of that home telling the neighbor that they could not burn their fireplace because their third floor furnace was not running, after having been told at the ZBA that their proposed home was too tall and too close to permit adequate draft of that very chimely. Yet, as you said, the city focuses on our ordinances to uphold the will of the people in plurality, as though the people invested within entire subdivisions lack relevant standing. But that said, those carefully drafted deed restrictions of the early 20th century created neighborhoods.
Mr. Nims, I had to enforce it before.
Okay. You know what the rest of it says.
Yeah, I do. Thank you. All right. Who's next? Go on once. Go on twice. All right. We're going to close public comment and bring the meeting back to the side of the table. Thank you for all of you who participated in public comment. I encourage you to stick around. We will be shortly having our discussion on the master plan, which is why I think a vast majority of folks are here tonight. And if, again, if you have questions, please either scan the QR or make sure you get your contact information to Ms. David's over there, and we can certainly get back to you. Couple of quick questions, since I'll take the bait. Again, if you read the rules of public comment, and if you read before, we don't engage typically with public comments. So if you have questions up here and you're expecting an answer, I think it's really distracting. It never goes anywhere. It's usually just a back and forth and all of that. That's why we say we typically don't respond. So I highly encourage you, if you have questions like that, to either put them in email, get with us, and we can get you an answer, because we don't want to, you know, disrupt public comment. Just out of complete clarity, there was a, an accusation or question, I'll say, I'll say it as a question, about meetings happening during the recesses. I just think it's important that everybody understand that would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, what is being alleged is a violation of the OMA. And, excuse me. Excuse me. I, we, we have the floor here, okay? Not you, we do, okay? So with that, I'll hand it over to our city attorney once again to explain who sits in on those recesses. Were there any violations of the Open Meetings Act?
No, Mayor. Having sat in there purposely discussed things like baseball and dance recitals to purposely avoid any of those types of allegations. So this commission is well aware of those parameters set in place by the OMA and adheres to those.
Thank you, Mr. Krasowski. As it relates to presentations that we have from time to time, again, if you take the time to read the rules, there are provisions in there about clapping during public comment, because we actually had an individual here, a couple individuals here that seemed to speak differently than, let's say, a majority. And in fact, during one of those public comments, it was really sad that folks laughed and mocked. And I don't think that's very respectful. I think we can all agree that's not very respectful of other people, of the process of an orderly meeting. So during public comment, those rules are put in place and enforced for exactly what you saw happen tonight, okay? When we have presentations, that is different, okay? That is not the same as public comment, and there is a difference. And if you want to, if you can't understand what that difference is, we can talk about that later. And I think the only other question, oh, how we select people, we look around. I try to move around the room, and if we're picking too much from this side or that side, we see hands that go up. We just want to make sure that we're, you know, trying to do the best we can to get some random folks up there. Unless, for example, Tom, talking about the Historical Society and the pancakes that they do, some people will email me and say, "Hey, I have an announcement to make. Is it possible that we can come a little early? The head of public comment on big meetings tonight." And I'll accommodate that as chair, which is the privilege to do so. So with that, I will hand it over to the commission for item nine, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Nobody wishes to pull anything off the consent agenda? Okay. All right. Well, Commissioner Douglas?
With approval of the consent agenda.
Yeah, a motion by the Commissioner Douglas. We have a second by Commissioner Herzog. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We have the consent agenda passed. All right. That brings us to item 10, which is the adoption of the master plan 2050. Mr. Murphy, the floor is yours.
Good evening. If I can do a little rearranging. So there are numerous noteworthy items in the master plan, and I believe that the one sentence that captures the essence of a goal of a master plan is the sentence that reads as follows. "The primary goal of the master plan is to enable the city to manage its growth in response to changing demographics, to ensure that the outcome improves rather than detracts from the residents' quality of life." So with that in mind, the process to develop a new master plan commenced nearly four years ago. And if you see fit tonight, that could be the culmination of that process. We have with us tonight participating virtually Matt Lambert from DPZ Co-Design, the master plan consultant. And Matt has presented, has prepared an overview of the document for you. And we can answer, and I think it's important that we interject during his presentation. You can ask any questions or ask for clarification during that. And of course, we can certainly answer any questions that you have along the way, at the end of the process. So at the start of this process in August of 2021, you utilized your statutory authority in order to assert the right to approve or reject the document at the, at the final phase, this phase. So at its April meeting, the planning commission did hold a public hearing, and they adopted the documents. They did ask for some non-substantial grammar and punctuation and references be corrected. So you'll find attached to your agenda tonight pages from the document with those corrections. You'll also find a clean, complete copy of the entire document. The city commission does have the final disposition on the document. There's no statutory authority for citizens to protest any, to have a protest petition with regard to the document. And the master plan or its contents are not subject to repeal. It cannot be put to a vote of the general electorate. If the document is acceptable as presented tonight, there's a suggested motion for you. The one correction in that suggested or provided resolution for you is the date. It has a date of May the 12th. Obviously, today is May the 19th. If you determine that there are modifications that are necessary, it would be appropriate for you to specify objections and pass that back to the planning commission for their consideration once again. So with that, if you have any questions at the start, otherwise, we can have Matt start his presentation. And again, I think it's appropriate to interject with comments or questions along the way.
Questions for Mr. Murphy at this point. Okay. We'll proceed with the presentation.
Okay. And I will be sure to pause along the way if you'd like to ask questions. But I'm going to try to keep it fairly short since it is late there presently. So first, briefly, I wanted to review the process. We did not begin this work with an end goal in mind. We really began interviewing staff, elected officials, ZBDA and others alongside public discussions intended really to identify community concerns and goals. Established a dedicated website where we advertised engagement activities, asked residents about Royal Oak on the website, and provided for open comments. And that initial input led us to the questions that we asked on our first survey. So we didn't have a survey in mind. We got the first. This survey was open while our team spent time analyzing the city demographics, transportation, land use, and produced a study of housing supply and demand. So by March of 2023, we'd achieved about 4,000 touchpoints, 3672 there. And at this time, there also was not a proposed set of solutions. It was really information gathering. We proceeded to a week-long charrette that included topic-specific meetings and open houses in the evenings. During this time, the team began proposing ideas, which were discussed with the public. So we received a great variety of opinions from residents, and that really helped us to understand the issues, the opportunities, what some people want, what other people are concerned about. And through that, we assembled the proposed direction that came out of that charrette, the proposed direction for the master plan was summarized in a document called the initial direction for the master plan that was shared publicly and reviewed by the planning commission before we wrote the first draft. We also received website comments about this document and launched a survey covering the same questions. So that was all before writing the first draft. As you heard from the planning commission earlier, in terms of what we carried from the survey questions through to, through to the master plan draft one, the only thing that was not either a 50-50 split amongst the electorate or in support was, was the question of Woodward, which I'm happy to discuss more with you as you, as you see fit. Then in the process, we drafted two, we had two drafts of the master plan. Those were shared publicly, reviewed with the planning commissions in meetings. Those meetings included public comment. We made numerous adjustments through those two drafts, including changes to the future land use map, based upon both public comment and planning commission direction. You don't see a lot of that. It doesn't jump out to you, because most of what we colored is gray, which are the principally single-family neighborhood areas, which were intended to remain as is. So the tweaks are really in the corridors, and most of those were to, to sort of lower the intensity from, from one draft to another.
Wait, man. I'm sorry. Can you repeat that? I think you broke up. You said the gray on that back chart was not intended to change?
Correct. Yeah. And, and we'll touch on that when I pull up a larger copy of the, of the future land use map, just one on, on the page. But yeah, that's the, the neighborhood residential area, and clearly stated that the goal is to, to not see significant change or much change at all in, in those areas.
So the goal is to keep the neighborhoods primarily as they exist today?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's, that's clear on that. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I can't really hear the presentation. Yeah, folks, we have one presenter at a time, okay? Thank you.
So next, the draft master plan was shared, the planning commission approved it to be shared with surrounding communities and the counties required by Michigan Planning Enabling Act. So that was shared, shared around. And then final adjustments were made following that, along again with further planning commission review and the adoption process. As was noted by Joseph, we made some corrections to typos and, and small items like that, which were specifically, you have a specific record of every one of those. So nothing substantive was changed at all, just, just a few mistakes that were still around the document. So just overall, in terms of process, I just wanted to point out that we began with public input and continued throughout the development of the master plan. You know, of course, not everybody in the community is on the same page. There's plenty of people that we've heard from who want to see more aggressive change. And there's others that want to see less. There's people who love bikes, and there's people who don't, you know? But we've, we've really been careful throughout the development of master plan to balance this public opinion and to review details with the planning commission. So as, as noted, there were open comments on the website. We had open-ended comments on all the surveys. We've read through all that material. The planning commission had that material too. They've, they've read through that as well and can attest that there's quite a lot of balance between different community opinions. So that's, if you have any other questions, you're welcome to ask related to, to the process. The rest is content.
Okay. Start with Commissioner Collo.
Just on the process question too, when I went through and counted, I had about 6,000 data points appeared that you had collected over the course of the four years that we've been planning this. Does that sound accurate?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And can you just list some of the ways that we collected this? I counted about 35 different public input opportunities and sessions. Can you list some of those?
Yeah. We, we started with, well, one, the initial interviews. Then we had roundtable meetings. Then we had public survey, which had specific questions and open-ended question box. We got comments on the website directly, which were open-ended. There were two mapping exercises early on on the website, asking, you know, people what they, what they love and what they'd like to see changed in the city. Then we had the meetings during the, during the charrette process. So those were both the evening open houses. The meetings during the day were intended to be for a professional audience. A lot of the general, a group of folks from general public attended, so we allowed them to attend those too. And then following, we had review of the, of the documents with the planning commission with public comment and additional survey, more comments on, on the website. So all, all in all, you know, the, the survey responses early on are significant number. I'd say that, that 6,000 number may not include all of the charrette participation. I'd say probably be a little bit higher, but with the public comment at planning commission meetings, that's somewhat accurate.
Okay. And then if I recall, there's also a, a open, a town hall meeting with about 100 inputs also. Is that correct?
Yep, correct.
Okay. So in the, in the sense of, I mean, you do this around the country. For the size of the municipality that we have, is this more than typical for an input? Or is this on par? Or are we below?
No, that's, that's definitely significant. You know, a lot of times in, in surveys, you get much lower participation than the evening open houses. The charrette were well, well-attended, as have been public comment at planning commission meetings.
Okay. So it sounds like we had an active and engaged citizenry that helped shape this plan.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll note that we also supplied a summary of public input that was, that came after the charrette with the master plan direction document that included all the sticky-note comments that you received during the charrette. So there was quite a bit there.
Thank you. Commissioner Herzog?
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about how long the draft plans were posted for people to review and then give comments or be able to contact staff regarding the contents?
Yeah. Joseph, do you, you may have more of that information than, than I do. Yeah, Joseph, you may have more of that information than I do. We kept to sort of more than the minimum required amount of time for posting, for meetings and so forth. We had, surveys were open for months, reviews of the four, the direction plus the three drafts have been, has been around for well over a year at this point.
Yes, I don't have the exact timeframes for each of those different phases, but as Matt had stated, that's a very accurate statement that those different phases were open for extended amounts of time, especially the initial and the follow-up survey were open for a significant amount of time, which allowed for, as Commissioner Cola had pointed out, an extraordinarily high response rate.
Any other questions?
I think we can let Matt go into the goals if that's acceptable.
Yeah, actually, yeah. That sounds good.
Great, perfect. So here, I'll briefly review the master plan content. It's shaped into these seven goals. They're really interrelated. I'll discuss them individually because each of them is a chapter of the document in its own. However, the last one, aligned policies, that's not a chapter that emerged as something critically important from the public engagement. We really came to understand that because today, development is severely limited by current regulations, as in where you can build the most controversial type of housing, multifamily housing, town housing, duplex, because there are not places where that is clearly allowed and easy to come by. It causes really the overuse of the planned unit development process to build these types. There's a significant demand, and that's the only way to get it through. And as a result, that means that development is not predictable, and that leads to a great deal of angst amongst residents. So really, to address this, the master plan, future land use focuses heavily on where new growth should happen so that it can be clearly allowed there and to restrict it in places that is not desirable. And that's, you know, like within the single-family neighborhoods of the city, restricting growth there, but ensuring that we allow it on the corridors and the commercial areas. And then it follows to recommend that zoning, mobility, and other policies being modified in order to support this growth strategy. So it's ensuring that you don't have growth within the neighborhoods, but we have to be clear and enable growth to occur where it is desirable.
Commissioner Cola? Excuse me, man. So just so, once again, to clarify this, this does not erect four-story apartment buildings in a neighborhood, correct?
Nowhere does it do that.
How about a 10-story apartment building?
Uh, no.
No, okay, so 100-story apartment building?
Yeah, no new multifamily within residential neighborhoods there. And I can show you two slides from now of the zoning plan and how to read it.
Okay, thank you.
So the master plan here at the beginning, the many recommendations in the plan are summarized really in the 15 actions. So there's a whole bunch of stuff in there, a lot of words, a lot of discussion about why and details about how. But it's really about doing these 15, these 15 specific things that not only focus on future land use, but also on downtown, updating the recreation plan, working on stormwater, a lot of things about mobility, encouraging senior and affordable housing, advancing sustainability goals, looking at the southwest gateway. And each of these, in this beginning set of pages, are specifically referenced to the associated goals, those seven goals, the related details of the master plan, because they may be in different chapters, all the things that go together to support these main actions. And then also related policies within the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. So there's a direct mapping from the S-CAP to actions here, as well as the Aging in Place So here, Chapter One, this is what I was mentioning in terms of the zoning plan. This is the focus on future land use. As was stated, it's titled reinforcing the city's structure because overall, the city's already well organized, major changes aren't needed. So rather, we focus on the existing main streets, neighborhood centers, commercial areas, and larger road corridors of Royal Oak that should be better supported by land use and transportation-related policies and investments. Most significantly, future land use here differentiates areas where more significant growth should occur, that's areas of growth, so that it can be enabled and supported there, and areas focused on preservation, like residential neighborhoods, parks, schools, and other open spaces. Now, future land use is not zoning, future land use enables zoning. And very specifically, we're trying to not be duplicative of the zoning map with the future land use map, which is a major best practice that is, you know, now coming into common usage because future land use is required to enable, you know, multiple things in a place. Now, for the neighborhood residential on here, if you look at areas of preservation, you'll see Ps under one-family residential and one-family large-lot residential, because those are the zoning categories permitted within that future land use designation. You'll see an R under two-family and multiple-family residential. And the R below says zoning district restricted to properties already zoned with this future land use. So very specifically controlling and keeping neighborhood residential tied to single-family zoning designations here. And then the areas of growth, you'll see a lot more Ps, so there's a lot more permitted uses on those corridors and downtown and, you know, the districts such as that. Chapter Two, this focuses on sustainability and climate action. It includes policies from the S-CAP that are related to land use and transportation. We focus a lot more on ambition transportation opportunities, as well as issues related to stormwater and natural water management, things like increasing the native and climate trees and engaging, continuing to engage in regional sustainability. So you've already done a lot on sustainability and climate action. We see, while there's a lot of details in terms of how it's implemented in streets and on properties that we detail in the master plan, we focus a lot on providing better transportation and mobility options to help reduce transportation-related GHT emissions. Chapter Three, this addresses housing options, affordability, aging in place, and growth overall. As discussed, the primary focus is about enabling rules to occur where it is acceptable to help balance the supply and demand within the city. It does recommend streamlining zoning in those areas so that that can be provided at a lower cost versus the current process. And that can allow for some people to downsize, cleaning up larger homes that are desirable but limited in supply. You know, we have heard survey respondents, you know, not a ton, but certainly some older adults that were looking to downsize, there aren't currently sufficient senior housing opportunities. So we look at opportunities to leverage public properties where possible and to incentivize affordability within the structure that you're permitted to by Michigan state law.
So Matt, just a quick question, if we can go back a slide for a second. I just want to clarify, it looks like point 3.1, you know, identify where we want to grow, housing for all stages of life, lower cost of housing, and aligning policies. This is, what's this designed to do? Like, what's the emphasis of this? Who's this helping and protecting?
Yeah, so the emphasis is to enable housing growth on corridors and commercial areas, the areas where it's okay. And so that's really aimed at making it possible to grow, making it predictable where that growth is going to occur, and then streamlining the policies and processes to reduce costs, burdens, and unpredictability that are in the process. And then where we can find opportunity to provide housing for older adults that want to age in communities and provide opportunities for younger homeowners and families.
Okay, so I see this section as helping us meet the needs of seniors, first-time homebuyers, and young families who want to be in Royal Oak, right?
Correct.
Okay, that sounds like a good thing. Thank you.
Chapter Four, this is addressing preserving and enhancing neighborhood character, improving mobility, park programming for age diversity, and supporting the existing neighborhood commercial areas. Now, this section doesn't focus a whole lot on the existing neighborhoods because there's not much to change there, other than ensuring that we have sufficient sidewalks, that there's street trees exist, are planted where they're missing, are diverse, that you maybe consider whether the setbacks that you have in zoning match the actual existing houses or not, because they don't always. But really, what we focus on more so are the small neighborhood commercial clusters that are shown in blue on these diagrams to enable their redevelopment over time, and then focuses on moving through the neighborhood more safely. And we do a lot of that mobility in the last chapter. We have these diagrams, these artistic ideas of what a current neighborhood commercial area could evolve to look into in the future. But not like a new downtown, but something small, small commercial cluster readily walkable from neighborhoods, housing things like bakeries and cafes, and some additional housing to help support businesses. And as I said, these are all commercial today and located along major corridors.
Matt, can you explain these drawings here? Because there were concerns expressed at public comment tonight about, you know, why Dairy Queen is going away. I love Dairy Queen, I love Jims, I love Ray's, I love Golden Cone, I love them all, too much. Can you explain that, the nature of these pictures, what they mean, the context of these pictures? Because I understand, but maybe the way I explain it isn't necessarily being, I'm not doing it maybe in the best way people understand, and maybe you have a little bit better way of doing it.
I'll have a preface to Matt's answer. So when Matt and his team first came to town, we did a tour with them. And he had specifically inquired on strategic locations where people had been actively asking our office about sites that could be available for redevelopment. And we had provided him many of these locations that you see, imagine rendering, showing what it could be in the future. So every single site that's shown as something different is a site that our office continuously receives questions for about redevelopment. So these are sites that were provided to him specifically for those, for that purpose.
Those are private developers that are looking at buying privately-owned parcels of property to do whatever they privately want to do and getting guidance as far as what's permitted, what's allowed, all of that stuff. That's not the city of Royal Oak saying bulldoze it all and get rid of the Dairy Queen and build a building. This is areas that people have shown. And Dairy Queen would have every right to sell their building, keep their building, do whatever they want to do. But this is all the interest you get from private investment, private developers. And so therefore, you thought, hey, what would those look like if, in the event, someone bought the old gas station on the corner of Main and 13 that's now a gravel parking lot? What could that look like? Could that be a gravel parking lot today? Or could that be, you know, maybe a little bit of residential with a nice corner store on it or something?
Yes, and there's significant intersections. So during the charrette, when these were presented, they were all familiar to the residents that were coming, and they lived in that particular neighborhood. So these sites were very familiar to them. And there was solicited a very interesting reaction from the people of what could happen in their neighborhood to sites that they know people are sniffing around are redeveloping.
Yeah, I mean, I got folks, the Old Demos property in the neighborhood there, Maples, oh, man, you know, we want to see that thing developed. And I'm like, well, we're not developers at the city. We're, you know, we can decide what's put in front of us. But again, all of that's coming from residents in the charrettes, but also private developers to target those areas for renderings.
Yeah, and we asked folks during the charrette also, you know, what sorts of uses would you like to see in these types of places? Identify ones that you think would be good to see redevelopment? Because one of the issues you have with very long commercial corridors is you spread out all those businesses. This doesn't change that, but it just suggests that if you were to have redevelopment focused in these specific areas, that you could create these nodes of walkable places that have neighborhood-scale retail and services closer to folks. Now, that would need some additional housing support. So this shows, you know, in the neighborhood node, which is a smaller version, these smaller areas that are more sensitive, a lower scale of potential redevelopment in the future, and the main streets, a slightly larger scale, but not like anywhere near downtown, you know, still a few stories of housing and mixed-use development in these areas. So Main could help with Creutzlauch, so that area is really probably the larger of the areas that are, I don't know, we'll look at, are being viable in this category because of the already-existing development and potential development sites that you have there today. But they wouldn't, they're not forcing anything. This was our team sort of ideating, looking at the place and thinking about what it could look like should, over the course of time, any of these sites be sold, consolidated, and redeveloped by the private market.
Thank you, Matt. We have another question from Commissioner Teasley.
Thank you, Mayor Fournier. I think this is for you, Mr. Murphy. So I'm wondering if there have been developers who have inquired about some of these parcels, some of these areas for development? Are there any barriers that have prevented them from doing so that are being addressed through this master planning process?
Well, I think that's probably a better question for many of them, but this certainly would allow for a greater variety of land uses than is probably restricted, so to speak, under the existing future land use map categories. So giving them greater opportunity while keeping in mind the goals that the city has that Matt had just mentioned, of walkability and having defined neighborhood nodes.
And given the extensive community input into this plan, it seems like this could also help to communicate to the developers what the broader community is looking for in these areas. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, I agree with that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess this might be for Mr. Murphy. I just want, on the mayor's point, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this clearly. I went to France and Sun this weekend, I was stuck on a project, and Mike was there and he helped me pick out, he saved me hours of my life. If we pass this, does Mike have to sell his building tomorrow and redevelop it?
No, he does not.
Okay, so this does not force anyone to sell their privately-owned properties right now, correct?
No, it does not.
Okay, that's what I thought, but it sounded a little different in public comment. Matt, if I can ask you a question too, really quick. If you go back a slide, I found your first bullet point really interesting. Or maybe back a moment. So with preserve the neighborhood character, you talk about how we're going to change the zoning to match the existing neighborhoods. Is that what I'm understanding correctly?
No, well, we're not talking about changing the zoning at all. What we're talking about here is that when you do look at your zoning in the future, that you may want to double-check that what you have currently in the zoning matches the homes that exist, because in many cases, it shows that, you know, in terms of heights or setbacks and things like that, and that may be something that people are unaware of.
So the zoning should match the existing character of the neighborhood, though, is what this is trying to get to in the future?
Correct.
So the heights and setbacks that exist today would continue to exist into the future if we redo the zoning based on this master plan?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Teasley?
Yeah, that was another point that I was also interested in, because, so on the zoning plan table that you put up there, under the, can you pull, I don't know if you can, oh, yeah, it's a you can, oh, yeah, it's very small there.
I favor it for you if you want.
I had it up on here. But under the neighborhoods, it had Ps and Rs, right? So can you just go through that again? I just want to make sure that I understand. I'm understanding that the Rs would be that it's restricted to what's already there. So I think that's by things like the duplexes, for example.
Correct.
So Rs would mean the only, what is already there would be your recommendation for zoning as a follow-up step.
Correct, yeah. You have some duplexes and some multifamily, especially near the downtown and these neighborhoods, a little bit to the, to the northeast. This is saying that those can continue to be what they are, but that you couldn't build more.
You couldn't build more. And then the Ps are around the single-family housing, and those would be what would just be permitted. I didn't see any business, business or commercial-related zoning categories that would be either P or R in those, in that category, correct?
Right.
And, and just, I know that this has been said a couple of times, that zoning is not part of this process. You made a comment, I just want to make sure I understood it correctly, that like this, sounds like this is considered the best practice currently in the, in your field, in the field of planning, to make these as separate processes? Did I understand that right?
Yeah, correct. So we'll do separate, they're separate, they're separate maps. So the future land use is a different thing from, from zoning. And what's happened in some places is that the future land use is duplicative of the zoning district. And that can, you know, that can lead to, to a lack of understanding of how future land use work. And it leads to, to restrictions being put in the wrong place. You know, zoning is what, is what restricts the specific use on the property. And future land use is a broader type of map that's looking at a longer term.
Yeah, decades into the future, largely. Correct? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So then we go over here to chapter, chapter five. This details the larger commercial or industrial areas that are really the focus of growth. So, you know, today, you have downtown, it's walkable, it's great. But you could have more walkable and mixed-use centers that could develop in other places over time. Not a ton, because, you know, you don't have anywhere to grow out. But you do have existing industrial or, of course, sort of underutilized commercial areas that could grow to mixed-use centers. Again, should that be something that, you know, that the landowners choose to deal with the property. So this plan provides specific recommendations for each of these areas, also including improvements in downtown, in downtown 13 Mile and Woodward, Delamere, and there's the Bellier, Main Street, Ridgerville, Ryan Campbell. So this is really talking about how those, how more mixed-use places over time could support greater walkability and mobility in the community. Now, we also do show, Clausen, you know, not in the city, but to point out to the fact that, that the Main Street there also supports the northern portion of Royal Oak. And so, Delamere, this was just another artist's depiction of what could occur over time. So here, Delamere had emerged as a unique opportunity. You know, today, the, the industrial history has really shifted towards smaller businesses. So this looks at key investments such as in streets and parking. With those, the area could see significant redevelopment and become a Main Street, not a downtown, but, but a walkable Main Street with mixed housing types and sizes and, and a location that's already adjacent to existing parks and services in an area that's apparently less walkable, less pedestrian. So chapter six, this, this is the last one. And there's a few slides on it because it's really the most detailed chapter of the master plan. The focus is on increasing walking and biking throughout the city, improving safety, and really coordinating transportation and land use. Because streets and their makeup, the width of sidewalks, how trees are planted, if you have parking or you don't have parking, how fast the road is, those are all closely related to the land uses along that. You can't get, you can't get a walkable downtown street if it has the wrong configuration of the road. At the same time, you can't have a safe, quiet neighborhood street if the road is wrong in that location as well. So here we talk about land use and transportation coordination, looking at specifically walking and biking and speed management, and balancing the street priority. That really talks about the fact that when you're in downtown, you need a lot of space for pedestrians as well as cars and bikes. Whereas if you're along a more major corridor, then you have a little bit more of a balance because of cars than you do the pedestrian. But when we get to an activity center or a neighborhood Main Street, then that balance has to change sort of conceptual design uses of all of it. This is also where we looked at rightsizing streets. I know that's come up a whole bunch. That was something that we had proposed early on. And we spent probably the most time with our transportation engineer, looking at, at the numbers and evaluating streets throughout the city. So we're providing their recommendations based off of traffic volumes and land use. Here, we also look at sidewalks. We spent quite a lot looking at increased crossing, crossings, safety. That's more crosswalks needed at major roads, enhancements where they're needed to existing crosswalks, and signal timing, street trees, street furniture like benches and so forth. And we recommend, over time, building a neighborhood greenway to optimize the way that you can get around by bike and, and walking and rolling in the city as well. And that specifically is related to some pushback that we heard about bike facilities on certain major roads, and your lack of ability to, in many cases, provide enough space on roads that have a constrained, constrained area to provide sufficiently safe biking accommodations, especially for more timid riders. And so the, the greenway system is basically parallel routes through neighborhoods that would be designed, you know, with bike signage and coordinated with crosswalks and perhaps diverters that, that stop cars from being able to go quickly through the neighborhood. Thus, that you can make it nicer for, for biking, especially with families. But at the same time, as we're improving crosswalks associated with this network, it makes it easier to walk as well. And we specifically looked at connecting schools, parks, and areas of, of commercial activity throughout the city.
Commissioner Tezum?
Yeah, you were, I think, getting exactly to what my question was about. So I have been working with the public and private schools in Royal Oak, as well as Jill Martin, one of our staff from the State Manager's Office, preparing the safe routes to school. We are working on some of that data collection at this point. And we are at the street audit portion of that process, if you're familiar with it. So when I was reading through the plan, I was very curious about the map that had the recommendations for improvements on crossings, because that's a lot of what we'd be looking at. And I was wondering if you could just give a couple sentences, description of how you selected those intersections, particularly as it might relate to, to school crossings, but interested more generally as well.
Yeah, so there were a couple of things that we, we looked at. One of which, we started out looking at where there are sufficient crosswalks on, on major roads. This map doesn't show all of them. There's, there's another map, which I'll pull up later, that, that has more specific crosswalk improvement recommendations. This, this map specifically looks at where, where schools are located, and where would be the best, the most convenient and as direct as possible routes to connect into and through each of the neighborhoods. Some of them are a little bit strange. They have to jog, but that's because some streets don't align. But we were looking at where you already have crosswalks today, what, what those crosswalks might be improved in the future. I'd say the, the most difficult area to, to navigate is the Northwest. But we definitely spent a lot of time looking at roads and, and crossings in that area, especially opportunities across 13 Mile, which is particularly difficult. And then we were mapping that along with the bike network. So, so again, it was really looking at schools and parks, and finding ways to navigate through the city from neighborhoods to, to a school, school to a park, and school to a school, and making as close a connection as we feel.
Commissioner Erzog?
I would like to build off of what Commissioner Tezum was asking, and connectivity to other communities, like Berkeley and Birmingham and Clausen. Did you take, you talked a lot about mobility through the city, but how about connectivity to other communities?
Yeah, so we, we also looked at the bike, the bike ped plans in surrounding communities, and opportunities to make connections to them. There's, there's certainly some limitations because of I-75 flights, that, that makes some, it really limits our, our connections off of the east. But we, we looked at the possibility of 11 Miles connections from a bicycle and ped route. That's not shown in this because it was separate from the greenway. But we show like on 12 Mile and Webster, up, up across 14 Mile and into Birmingham, and then existing sort of bike lane connections up into Clausen. You can also see at the top of the diagram, from, from the Northwest, connections to, to the East and into Clausen as well. There's a few locations that, that are ideal for, for a bike ped connection there.
Matt, I have a question for you on the infrastructure. We did have a question at Public Comment. It was more directed at me, but I think it's more relevant for this discussion. When you talked about some of the corridor streets and the analysis your transportation engineers did, you know, again, being up here for a while and talking to our city engineers over the years, and when lane reductions are recommended to enhance pedestrian safety, vehicular safety, there's always a traffic volume analysis done. In my understanding, going back into the history of Royal Oak, you know, a lot of these roads were built with the anticipation that, you know, traffic loads, you know, the population of Detroit, Metro Detroit would be doubling, you know, by this time. And, and we didn't see that. We saw the automotive industry erode, we saw manufacturing go away. A lot of things have changed since these roads were built, and they're just, you know, overbuilt for the traffic volumes we see today, and for, and I think you mentioned it, any other sort of, you know, multi-family corridor or commercial development along the corridors. Can you talk a little bit about that? Does that still hold true, what I just said? Or do you have any points of conflict with that, what I just said?
Yeah, that absolutely holds true. I mean, we see it pretty much everywhere. That's, that's really what was built in, you know, from, from the 60s on to, to the early 2000s. And it really has been changing for, for decades now. And there's all sorts of studies and data around what the right volume is. We really put that to the traffic engineer on, on our team to, to reference the national standards that are associated with it, look at the, the volumes that you have on, on the major roads of Royal Oak. Certainly, you know, one of the, one of the issues that you suffer from is that there is just a lot of people trying to get east-west or north-south during rush hour. So you do have, you know, a lot of traffic, certainly. But the volumes aren't such that they necessarily require four lanes. You know, in a lot of instances, they can be accommodated in two lanes instead of four, and that makes left-hand turns safer, it gets those cars out of, out of the traffic flow. There's a lot of reasons why it works better when you're making those reductions. And then a lot of time, you can have additional space for, for trees. When you need on-street parking, that may be, that may be possible. But yeah, the, the volumes are certainly justifying road diet today for most of the roads. You know, Woodward's the, the most controversial one. When we spoke to the Michigan Department of Transportation about Woodward, their, their focus was that the I-75 construction is such that it's pushing a lot of traffic off onto the mile roads and onto, onto Woodward, that would otherwise be on I-75, and that they anticipate the volumes to, to reduce when 75 is open back up fully. And we had our traffic engineers also look specifically at the, at the historic and projected volumes to Woodward. And they recommended that it would also be viable for, for the reduction as a result.
Right. And specifically about Woodward, when we talk about any sort of reductions, I mean, that is ultimately MDOT's decision. And the way this plan approached it is said, okay, what's best for, not necessarily commuters using Woodward, but what's best for the neighborhoods and businesses that are using Woodward? Like in the surrounding adjoining area, having the pull-offs and more buffer. But that debate would be had with real data and, you know, a stronger look towards traffic efficiency going down Woodward. So that's just saying, hey, if you want to make the neighborhoods a little bit more livable along the Woodward corridor, this is what we recommend. However, the idea of what that means or the impact to traffic, that would be studied and done, and ultimately MDOT's decision. And we may back away from it and say, you know what? The data right now on Woodward shows that we'd stall traffic. And although we'd want to have more buffer with our neighborhoods, you know, the community doesn't think that's a good idea for traffic. But that would be a decision that we'd make. But you had to have a basis for Woodward, which was to have that buffer for the neighborhoods, add for development on Woodward for parking and all that stuff. Doesn't mean that's the answer. Next.
Correct, correct. Yeah, and we, the, the statement is to participate in the, in the work that's being done all along the Woodward corridor, that's looking at, at the appropriateness of the design of the road and land use along it. So we, we drew a proposal that is an idea of one thing that could happen. And that would be determined later through, through those processes, coordination with MDOT, and, and adjacent communities.
Commissioner Erzog?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off of that, that sentiment, that the communities along Woodward from Pontiac to Detroit are convening, and they've been doing it about two years or more, just to talk about Woodward. And for, and it was MDOT convening them, so it's curb-to-curb. But we have an opportunity to also look at what's happening on Woodward so that we have an economic development or whatever. So it's not just a highway that we have an ability to use that space in a different way.
Yeah, and, and specifically, you know, we, we came up with a concept that's different than when we looked at Woodward and Birmingham, because it's different through, through Royal Oak, the way that it functions and how you engage with the neighborhoods. So, you know, the proposal is, is an idea, a suggestion of how you might be able to make it pleasant to, to walk and bike along it, and more pleasant for, for businesses and potentially even mixed-use development in the future. If you can, if you can improve the, that sort of, that edge of the road, you can actually end up providing a lot of opportunities for, for growth there, which wouldn't be viable today.
Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, could you talk a little bit about what slip lanes are? That was mentioned by our, Chair of our Planning Commission. It's sort of the only thing that was a deviation in terms of a recommendation from what the polls showed. And I don't know about anybody else here, but I learned what slip lanes were through this process. And I'm wondering if people here are, are wondering at home what it is and what it would mean.
Sure. And, and I wish I had that drawing up. But it's in the master plan, the, the drawing shows it. Basically, what it is, is, is instead of having the high-speed lane, you have a low-speed lane that's separated by a small median. So right now, in the center of Woodward, you have the very large median. Then we have, you know, a number of lanes on, on the side, you know, four, four lanes. What this, what the proposal suggests is, is that fourth, that, that outermost lane gets separated from the inner three by another small median. And that, that stops you from having that traffic pulling directly on and off of Woodward in every business, which we all know is quite dangerous and disruptive. dangerous and disruptive of traffic flow. So that is separated by a median with trees, and then it can be slow speed, slow speed and provided an opportunity for on-street parking and also bike facilities and wider sidewalks. So essentially, you have the street characteristic that's closest to the businesses is more akin to a main street than a regional highway, and it's just done by separating that one lane, all within the existing right-of-way of Woodward, so it doesn't affect the private property at all.
That's page 89. You'll see the graphic on page 89. I do have it on my screen if we can, through the magic, change it. You want to show that quickly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Matt, just to look at this again, we're not proposing, or this plan would not propose a reduction of lanes on Woodward, just a reconfiguration to make it more friendly for use of everyone and economic development along that kind of tired corridor, correct?
Yeah, so it takes that, the outermost speedy lane, and it turns it into a slow lane, basically.
Yeah. Which it kind of is today already. Oh, yeah. And then it also provides a buffer between the residents who live one block off of Woodward, who we hear constantly about noise on that very fast highway. So would that provide green space and buffer to improve the quality of life for those residents living one, two blocks off of Woodward?
Yes, correct. And if, you know, in the proposal as drawn, it suggests that the median doesn't have direct openings to the residential neighborhood streets that connect onto Woodward, which means that you're reducing cut-through traffic and you're reducing the speed of car moving onto the level of trees.
Sounds like an amazing way to protect neighborhoods here. Thank you.
So I think Joseph, you have that up.
Commissioner Cheesam?
It's not about Woodward, though. So, actually, I wanted, there was a comment made at public comment, a question about why not condos, why apartments? I actually, I have to say, I've had this question myself, and I've realized that it's been developers bringing projects to us that have always been apartments, and I know that they often understand the market, but I was interested when I was reading this master plan. It sounds like you did do some market demand research around housing, and I was wondering if you could just speak to that a little bit and how that informed some of the recommendations and, or some of the items in this plan.
Yeah, well, I mean, essentially, there is a demand for all sorts of types of housing, you know, rental for sale, also single-family, you just don't have the land to build more single-family housing, but you do have opportunities on these corridors and commercial areas to provide for more duplex town-owned and multifamily housing. Now, in terms of rental versus ownership, you don't have any way to control that directly, like you can't regulate one way or the other. So you can't control tenure, as everyone's called. So really, the best that you can do is to make it easier to get approvals in the places that you want to see like growth, so you're reducing the cost, and you may then better fit the development parameters that would allow you to sell a unit versus renting it. You know, you're basically dealing with the cost of construction and uncertainty of the development process is such that it can drive up the cost of development, and you may be beyond the ability of what the buyer is willing to pay for a condo that puts some apartment. And all the housing stuff is, that's why there's a lot of explanation in the chapter on housing, because it can get kind of complicated in terms of supply and demand and price points and all sorts of things. And there's just a couple more. You know, still here on Old Doherty, we mentioned improving Woodward. We looked at what restrictions you have in the Delamere area. You know, it's not just there, you know, your 14 Mile includes Jog is problematic, so that's something that's going to be important to look at. It wasn't, you know, within the purview of the master plan to say, oh, here's a solution, but we evaluated the issues and suggested a few things that could be looked at. We looked at improvements to the bus stops, you know, for having a place to sit and some shelter, especially along the corridors. And a suggestion to really take a look at the opportunity to improve over time the Amtrak station, it should become an actual station and a sort of central feature of the west side of downtown. And then overall, this image is the Southwest Gateway. We know there's a lot of barriers and issues, so we explained a bit about that, and certainly something that would need its own plan to look at, and what do you do with the barriers of crossing Woodward and beautification, access to the zoo, and some park spaces that you do currently have along Main. And lastly, it goes through, these are the more detailed drawings about improving crosswalks and safety for moving throughout the community. On the left, this is associated more with that greenway network that I was talking about between schools and parks and so forth. But on the right, we went into a great deal more detail in terms of what crosswalks are sufficient today and which ones could use improvement in the orange. Usually, that's because they're not striped on both sides, or there's not a pedestrian refuge, these sorts of improvements. And then in red, opportunities for new crosswalks to improve safety in crossing major roads throughout the community. And so that's in a little bit longer of a nutshell than I thought, but it was, you know, good to take questions along the way and happy to answer any more.
Well, we certainly asked a lot of questions along the way. Are there any more questions now that we've concluded the presentation? Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matt, can you talk in general, you know, a lot of the development in the city has been in a piecemeal way over the last several years, that the 1999 master plan has just become outdated and not in line with how the city needs to grow. Can you talk about how this plan is going to help us manage that and not be reactive to this, but be proactive about it?
Yeah, and that's where I came up with that discussion early on about aligning policies. The issue you have, and I may not have said it clearly enough, is that you're not saying where it's okay to build the type of development that the market is looking for, and that is mostly multifamily housing, townhomes, and mixed-use development. Because there's a place that that's easy to do and allowed in the city, you have folks going through the planning unit development process, which means it could just happen anywhere, you know, it's unpredictable. So this is really focused on saying, here's where we want to see this growth that there's demand for, and then recommending that you follow soon with zoning to address specifically the growth in those areas, to make it easier for that to occur, so you're reducing costs and to ensure that your code is dealing with issues of livability and walkability that are associated with that. You can get good growth of that type, and you can get growth of that type that is not as desirable as you'd like, and that's really the focus on form-based aspects of zoning. They're really most useful, most critical in those mixed-use and higher-intensity areas. They're perfectly fine in residential areas, but most critical to ensure that you're getting the best that you can out of new development, especially by making clear what the expectations are. And in fact, it was during one of the Shreit meetings that an affordable housing developer had brought up form-based zoning. We didn't even bring it up to begin with, with an understanding that by putting all the rules in place in a clear and understandable manner, that it makes it easier for them to build what the city wants, and right now, you're just not set up in that way.
So it takes us from going to just kind of looking at the plans that are presented to us and instead telling, letting our values that we know that this is where we want growth to happen, and seeing that, you know, the pressure taken off of other aspects of the city and directed in a controlled fashion, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, you know, you just brought up the Shreits, and we talked before about the thousands of data points that we had. Can you talk about how you took some of the input you received, and maybe from the first version of the draft, the first actual draft itself to today? How has it evolved and changed over time to incorporate the input that you receive from the robust public input?
Yeah, well, I went through a lot of detail in the beginning about all the public input sessions, and I, because I wanted to point out the fact that we didn't propose anything until first we heard from people about their issues and goals, and then we surveyed folks, and then we held the Shreit, during which the subject matter that we discussed, we drew proposals, we asked people specific questions then about where growth of different types should occur, what sorts of businesses would folks want to see in their, near their neighborhoods in these commercial areas, what the future of the parks are like, how they'd like to move around the city. So we asked a lot of that in that instance, and that really helped drive the initial direction, which we then surveyed further on, that helped us to focus on studies that we did on the rate sizing of streets and of the housing cost issues. So we provided specific detail in the master plan document about that because those were the questions that were raised. Then following, most of the changes that were made are related to future land use. So we had a number of changes that came from staff in terms of correcting accuracy. We had changes from the Planning Commission and public comment during Planning Commission meetings. As I had mentioned, a lot of that was reducing the amount of potential development intensity on a number of different corridors throughout the city, so we took that into consideration. And there's a variety of other changes that we looked at specifically in road recommendations. We were asked to then later look for specifically at 11 Mile, which we added in, and to look at the Southern Gateway. And we did make modifications relative to questions that were asked to try to ensure that we were providing as much clarity as possible, you know, given the complexity of the terminology.
Okay, so it sounds like you considered input from thousands of people to make this, and while it might not always align with like a small group of, let's say, passionate people who show up and yell loudly sometimes, it is reflective of the thousands of people that you spoke to throughout the process, right?
Yeah, and we got plenty of comments all throughout it to be more aggressive than we're being in terms of where and to what extent our growth is happening, just as we are getting a similar amount, to be less aggressive. So we believe we landed somewhere that is, that sets a good path forward, but doesn't address, you know, doesn't change the single-family nature of neighborhoods that came up really early on. And in the beginning, we said that we don't want to, we don't want to make that change, we're not going to suggest that change, and we've certainly stuck with it. And the same follows through when we're talking about streets and user preferences for walking, rolling, biking, and driving, and various other issues throughout the plan.
Great. And then I think I'll end here with, no, this commission has invested heavily in parks recreation within the city, in our green spaces, in our environmental sustainability, and that's been a goal and objective that we've been working at for a long time, and it shows, like we're seeing improvements in our parks, our green spaces. What's the role of this plan in protecting those public spaces, the parks, the green areas, now and into the future?
Well, I mean, first of all, there's certainly in the future land use as parks. There's also the other open space category, because you do have privately owned open spaces. So they're technically not city parks, they're differentiated as such, but there's nothing that changes the designation. They couldn't be redeveloped without changing the future land use category. Now, in terms of...
So wait, I just want to ask a question there really quick, Matt. I read online somewhere, this group's spreading some false narrative that that open, other open space could be multifamily high-rise housing, is that true?
No.
Okay, so it sounds like a flat-out lie. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
And I was just going to add that what we do say in the master plan relative to the parks, which are plentiful and really well-managed, is that what we should do in the next step, as you're looking to do your next recreation plan update, that we should really think about the different types of parks from a walkability standpoint for different neighborhoods, to ensure that around the city, folks have easy walk or bike access to parks that are smaller as well as parks that are larger, and have access to a variety of different programming for different ages. So that look at the whole mobility, transportation aspect of how parks and neighborhoods interact.
Well, that sounds really, I mean, to have a park system that is then thought about and how they're connected, that's another step for the city. I mean, that's pretty amazing. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Herzog.
Well, I have a question, and it's probably more for Mr. Murphy, but what was the process for vetting the plan? Like after the plan was put together, wasn't it sent out to other folks to review?
Yes, under the state statute, we do have to send the proposed master plan that the Planning Commission considered to different entities identified in the state-enabling legislation, and they have an opportunity to provide comment back. There were some comments that were received from City of Southfield as well as...
One second, Mr. Murphy. The doors seem to have locked at midnight. Can we make sure those doors are open? Thank you.
The City of Huntington Woods and the City of Southfield, and the county has a court, what's referred to as a coordinated zoning committee, and they provided some input as well. It was distributed to public utilities. Once you adopt the master plan, we have to notify all those same entities that it's been adopted and provide them with a copy or a link to a copy of the plan to let them know that it's, it has been adopted, but that is the process for vetting under the state act.
All right. Any other questions? All right. So, Matt, stand by in case we have additional questions during the discussion and dialogue. Who wants to open up the discussion?
It's your baby, Sheriff.
Okay.
We're here in Pennsylvania.
We have almost 60,000 residents here, or maybe 55,000 adult residents, and it would be impossible for us to hear from all of them. What matters is that we hear from a representative sampling. And I am honestly astonished at the quantity of input we have had in this process, and that quantity assures me that broadly, the plan reflects the values of the people of our city. I mean, I'm looking at over 5,000 or 6,000 touchpoints along the way, at every possible level, from group processes to individual voting. I will say that the quantitative survey that we did that had 3,000 responses was the strongest indicator to me that this plan was on the right path. In particular, the recognition that people felt that the place for growth in our city is, should be in our major corridors and in our industrial areas, and indeed, that's what the plan calls for. I think this plan reflects the values of the people of Royal Oak. It protects our neighborhoods, and I will say that from the very beginning, there have been people who are very passionate about protecting our residential neighborhoods, and I think they should all declare victory. and I think they should all declare victory after this, because the plan does exactly that. The, the consultants listen to the interests of people and have clearly stated in so many words that neighborhood areas are, are slotted for preservation. That still leaves, and as Mr. Casada pointed out earlier, actually not, a very small portion of our city that is available for development, again, largely in the corridors, and some really exciting ideas about the Delamere industrial area. As we see industry declining in this country, those areas open up for very interesting opportunities for mixed use, business and residential, and there was a lot of quantitative support for that as well. But anyway, our values, our, our neighborhoods, our beautiful neighborhoods, our connections, our walkability, as, as Mr. Murphy spoke early on about the interest in and the desirability of people to get somewhere without having to get in their car, and Royal Oak has that. Our 50 parks, the idea of connecting our parks and our schools in a more walkable, accessible way is a very strong theme here. We didn't even talk about some of the ideas much for downtown, with the ideas to better link Main Street to Washington and to increase retail traffic and opportunities for retail businesses in there. I, I think this plan reflects our city's values. We are enabling markets here. I, I've heard people say along the way, the city's going to do this, and really, the city doesn't do anything except provide a framework for, for development, for business owners to succeed. And, and I've heard criticism of, you know, developers and landlords and businesses wanting to make money, and it is their desire to make money and their ability to do it successfully that enables them to deliver to us the services and goods that we want. And so, especially in terms of real estate development, I think this plan enables that development, gives them a chance to serve the people who live here and the people who want to live here. We've heard overwhelmingly, and we see this, young people especially want to live in cities like Royal Oak, in places with strong downtowns, with walkability. They, I, I mean, I, all of us maybe at this, I don't know, maybe at this table got our driver's license the day we turned 16, right? And yet there are, except maybe...
I'm grounded.
And now you see, you see teens are kind of shrugging their shoulder, planning to live somewhere where they can walk, they can use public transportation, they can use ride-sharing services, and Royal Oak has that. And that is going to be the, the future of our success as a city. And I'll talk a little bit about housing development. Real estate development is expensive these days, and especially building workforce housing or affordable housing, and the only way really that that's going to happen is through some form of subsidy. You know, no one's gonna, it's hard enough to build market-rate residential these days, and I'm just gonna kind of tease this a little bit, and if you follow the commission's actions, you know that there have been a couple of projects that we have looked at, one nearby here with developers who have put together subsidy packages where they will be able to deliver workforce housing for the city. I think we're going in the right direction. Again, I think this plan, there will be people who object to parts of it, there will be people who adore parts of it. In broad strokes, though, it reflects our values, and I will be voting for it.
Very well said, Commissioner Douglas. Commissioner Herzog.
It's really hard to follow that, but I do want to get some, some thoughts out. First, I want to thank staff, the consultant, and the volunteer planning commission for going through this process for years, it sounds like, and all the hard work that you put into this, so that we tonight have a great plan to discuss and debate and, and hear, hear about. So the last plan that we had was in 1999, and I was 16 years old, and at that time, there was Blockbuster. I had a dismant, and I thought it was really cool, and most of my time was spent cruising because gas was $1.17, and like Deshers' point, I wanted to drive as soon as I could. And now, we heard from the chair of the Planning Commission, this plan is to be future-thinking about 20, 30 years from now, and so I will be 62, 72, and to think about how far we have come from 16 to 42, then to 72, and the values that we have and we're bringing along our community, I think it's just kind of a wild experience that we're having. But I think one point that was very, that I wanted to touch on is what the chair said, was that it's bringing a sense of place, community, and quality of life, and those are the reasons why I moved to Royal Oak and why I've stayed in Royal Oak and why I've wanted to serve in Royal Oak, is because of this chair's community that we have and the sense of place. And, and so, like Commissioner Douglas said, I think this plan helps, of course, it's not gonna make everyone happy, but it does show our values and our priorities and, and how we're thinking about those long-term. I am really proud to see that there's advances in sustainability and climate action plan. That was not in the 1999 plan, so boldly in this plan. So I like the, the land use in transportation and mobility and making sure that things are safe. My passion project, of course, is Woodward. I think that it was the premier road, that the first paved street, the first traffic light, and it should be more than a highway for our community. It should be the premier road that it is in Michigan. And so I like the fact that we're thinking about it in a different way, that it can be walkable, there can be businesses on there, there can be housing on there. There's just a lot of opportunity that we have neglected, and so I'm really excited about that, that portion. But I just want to end on that. I think that this plan is showing our values and, and so I'll just, it's late, so I'm rambling. Thank you.
Mr. Macy.
I'm afraid I'm gonna ramble too. I'm also feeling, feeling the time. I think, and I think it's been well said here already, I just want to say, I was talking to a friend earlier today about reviewing the plan in advance for tonight, and reading it, thinking like, boy, this is a great plan, what a great city. And it really does put together the values that we hold as, as Royal Oakers. So when you're out talking to people about what they value and what they want in their city, these are the things that they are talking about, and it's just really unfortunate that the dialogue has become so much about whether or not we're eliminating single-family housing, with one side saying, they're doing it, they're doing it, and we're saying, no, we're not, we're not, and that's what we've talked about, instead of this 90 pages of really incredible material that had been put together by our staff, by the consultant, by the volunteers in the planning commission, but also people in the community who are having their voices heard. It's, it's a great document, and I hope that people who are concerned about it take the time to, to really read it. At the very least, there's some really great maps in there that you can look at, and I think really shows interesting things about Royal Oak and how we're set up and how we could be set up. I think Commissioner Herzog spoke really well about the, the timeline that we're talking about and the changes that we see in our community, our city, over that time. And this, this plan really puts forward a vision for our city that I think we would all be excited to be there if we make it that far. Also, also far away from that myself, but I just think it's, it's disappointing that there's been so much dialogue about things that aren't in the plan and not quite enough about all the great things that are in it. And so I encourage you to, if you haven't taken the time to, to read it, to, to take a look, because it does reflect our values as a community, and I think it's hard to disagree with that if you have read the plan.
Mr. Hunt.
Well, ditto to what everyone else has said up here. Commissioner Macy is right, this is a really good plan. It's not a perfect plan, but it's, it's a really good plan. We all know that Royal Oak is changing. Royal Oak today isn't the Royal Oak of, you know, the 90s, and the plan that we have in front of us really focuses on where we're going in the future, where Royal Oak will be 20, 30, 40 years from now. I really like the fact that the plan, it does a really good job heavily on the sustainability aspect, as Commissioner Herzog spoke about, and being very intentional about where we're gonna put this growth, rather than just seeing a developer, having them bring, you know, a project before us and deciding whether or not it should go there. I like the fact that this plan is, really focuses on where the growth needs to be, and I agree with Commissioner Macy. I, I read this plan really twice, maybe about a year ago when the, the early draft came out, and then more recently, and there is no way in, in reading this that I see that there's an elimination of, you know, single-family housing. And Mr. Casada, I love the fact that he figured out the 15% of the corridor that is actually being changed, and that's the area that we need to focus on of what, where the growth is gonna happen here in the city. So like Commissioner Douglas, I'll be supporting the plan.
Mr. Cheesem.
I'd like to highlight some of the things I think are really exciting about this plan, but first I just want to say, you know, I moved here from Ann Arbor, and my husb, my now-husband already had the house that we lived in for several years, and coming to Royal Oak, I saw right away Royal Oak is something really special. Royal Oak has something that's really great, it has this great downtown, you can walk around the neighborhoods, the tree-lined streets, just really lovely to walk around. And when I look at this plan, I think about how this plan is taking that really wonderful foundation into the future in a way that's going to have something for everybody. And some things that really stuck out to me in this plan is, I think the transit center proposed that didn't get very much talk is very exciting. Amtrak comes through here. For years, I used to take Amtrak to Dearborn, and the conductor knew me because I was the only one who used it for regional transport. And like, I think that there's an opportunity to make Royal Oak a center for, you know, small conferences, you know, people coming in from out of town and taking advantage of our restaurants, our theaters, all these great things that we have here. And so I really, I'm, I'm excited about the idea of building up that area, which is right downtown, and making it very, a strategic welcoming center for visitors to come and visit our, our city. The, the, I'm gonna get the terminology wrong, because now it's after midnight and my brain is shutting down, but these areas around, they called...
Nodes?
Nodes, yeah. The neighborhood nodes around the city are gonna provide great opportunities for businesses, where it's gonna be, you know, a small center of businesses, and I know that there's one on Lincoln, I think it's kind of near Alexander or somewhere in there, and there's a, a series of businesses where people in the neighborhood can go there, get their haircut, I think is, there's a barber there, and that, I think, is a really great opportunity to have around the city. I live downtown, I love living downtown, not everybody wants to have that, they want to live in the neighborhoods, but to have a little center where you can go and just do some of your basic errands, I think is really a great opportunity for the, for the residents there, but also for the businesses, because when the businesses are spread out, people have to drive right to that business, it, it makes it difficult for them to generate the customers, but when there's several businesses together, you know, there's cross-traffic, people see a new business and they utilize it. So I'm excited for what this plan can deliver for our businesses. As I mentioned before, working on safer routes to school, I'm passionate about enhancing the walkability of our already pretty walkable city, improving conditions for people to cycle around the city safely, and I think this plan provides some really great opportunities and structure for that. And yes, we do need more housing. I was just talking to somebody who graduated with a graduate degree, I don't know, four or five years ago, working professional in the public sector, and they can't, they can't live here. And I, and we don't have a lot of land space, so I think we're doing a good job of preserving those neighborhoods and yet providing opportunities to create some more housing so that people who want to live here can live here. Working professionals in the public sector can afford to live in our city, for example. So there's a lot that I'm really excited about here, and so I will be supporting this, this motion, or supporting this plan.
Mr. Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Much like this plan, I want to start with thanking the public input. Now, the plan was developed off of all the public input that we did, thousands and thousands of data points, so I want to recognize that and the people who made it happen. And there was a, you know, literally thousands that came out to tell us what we should do. And, you know, over the course of the last four years, we've had lots of public comments, and lots of them have been passionate, and I think that within that group, that there are some people who are truly maybe confused about what the plan has to offer. I think maybe there's some deception that might have been going on, as we've talked about, and I think that when you read this plan, you see that this plan just protects what works and prepares us for what's next, and that's what we've been aiming for for the last four years, and, and we've made it. You know, the plan keeps single-family neighborhoods intact, and we're planning with thoughtful, future-ready growth, but we're planning in the appropriate areas. Instead of, once again, we talked about the piecemeal approach, and that's not gonna happen going into the future. It's gonna be concentrated in areas where it makes the most sense. So, you know, it really aligns with our values and our goals, and advances our climate action plan, supports housing of choice, and preserves parks. I mean, listening to that last section about parks and how we have 51 parks and the green space, and how we're not only looking to protect it and preserve it, but enhance it in the future. This commission has spent records amount of funding on our park system, and to know that we're going to continue that in the future based on this plan is really heartening. You know, we're planting seeds for trees that we'll never see, literally, by expanding our tree canopy and investing in our parks. So this is really us continuing to move the city forward. And I want to thank our planning commission, Mr. Casada, Mr. Gantina's here, he's stuck it out, there have been too many late meetings. The planning commission has put a lot of effort into this. They've hosted the chariots, they've been at every meeting, they've taken the blunt of the, the comments, because we tasked our planning commission with writing this plan. This is what's been done by a planning commission, so both past and present members have really led to this, this really nice plan that, once again, is 90 pages of really aspirational thoughts for the future, so Royal Oak as it's great now and what it can be in the future. So, you know, when continuing to look down, I think it's important to also point out the past. So I'm a nerd, I read the 1955 master plan, the 65 plan, 88 and 99 plans, because I think it's important to know where you came from, to know where you're going. And, you know, the 55 master plan is actually pretty progressive. It talked about almost entirely multi-family housing south of Third Street. That clearly didn't happen, it didn't come to fruition, but that was the thought they had at the time. Fast forward 65, became a little bit more car-centric, you know, this is the height, it's post-war boom, we have hot rods racing up and downwardward. And then we get to 88, where we actually have this plan for how we're gonna redevelop 696, and at 696, on the entrance to the city, there was this concept of this big, vast arch, like this, the St. Louis arch, but in Royal Oak. Well, we all know that that's not there, because not everything that are in these plans comes to fruition. So much like, we're not gonna see Jerry Green go away overnight just because someone made a drawing of it, we don't see an arch at 696 because it just didn't happen. But the 1999 plan is really kind of peculiar to me, and that plan, they had really good data from SamCob, and that plan at the time showed, and the data showed, that the people, the amount of people living per house was going down, and that by the year 2020, it would only be two people per home. Yet inexplicably, at the time, they decided that we should have less density in our housing. So the 1999 plan actually wrote, was written away that forecasted a decline in population in Royal Oak, and it wasn't until about 2010 that our population started to go back up again, and that's about the time we started having new development in the city, and this plan is now going to address that, to make sure that we grow in a, in a manner that is coherent and in line with our values and goals. So I'm really interested to see where we go next. I think we're laying the groundwork for the future, for our kids, for our grandkids, and then for our grandparents and our parents to be able to stay here. We, you know, we want people to age in place, you know, to live their trilate in Royal Oak, young families to be able to move in, and, you know, new and people just in the workforce to figure out that they can live here. So this plan works on many different levels, and I'm excited to see where we go next.
Thank you, Commissioner Collo. Anyone else? I just say I agree with every single comment that was made by my colleagues, and I have to say to our, my fellow planning commission colleagues, very proud of the work, the effort, the open and sometimes hostile public criticism, and how you forged ahead and went through over a number of years with a lot of public comment, putting forward and approving a plan, I think is pretty remarkable. I want to thank city staff, all the hours we spent as an elected body or as an appointed body... as an elected body or as an appointed body, they are spending tenfold, hundredfold amount of hours behind the scenes, collecting the data, reviewing it, checking it, working with our consultant, checking it, reviewing it, and making sure that it aligns with a very difficult, diverse set of perspectives that we have in Royal Oak. And so, I can't thank everyone enough, and I can't say how proud I am to be a Royal Oker, given everything that's transpired. Maybe just in general about this plan, just to sum it up, real, at a high level, we're doubling down on the things we love in Royal Oak, and we're making some adjustments to accommodate a changing world. The plan does reflect a balance of perspective and our values at the same time. I think a comment was made tonight that 50-years from now, Royal Oak will be unrecognizable. I think every 50-years, Royal Oak has been unrecognizable. 50-years ago, we had manufacturing, that industry has left. We are much older than we were 50-years ago. Most of these houses and bungalows held three to five kids. You knock on doors, you talk to people, "I had 12, you know, I got this house from my parents, we raised 12 kids in this house." That's not the case today. We're witnessing a population growth, as Commissioner Kolo said, you know, from 1999. You do the things people want, you provide exemplary public safety, A-plus public safety. You provide 51 parks, you invest in your parks, you fix the damn roads, you do all the things that people expect and that residents want, yeah, other people are gonna want to move here and be part of this exciting story that's Royal Oak. And so, we need to make room for people, we need to make room for our kids, we need to make room for those who want to transition out of their current home and maybe try something different as they age in place with dignity. And this plan addresses that. We heard a lot, I mean, I'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the fact that we heard over this process, a lot of comments about single-family homes going away. And the first few times I heard that, it concerned me. And we went and we read the document, we asked a lot of questions at the planning commission, and we could not find any substance to substantiate such a claim. The fact that all the planning commissioners, except Commissioner Douglas, own single-family homes in single-family neighborhoods, all of us, except Commissioner Douglas, have single-family homes and single-family neighborhoods, like there's some grand conspiracy to get rid of single-family neighborhoods, to what end and what means, when it's literally in the plan. We covered it in many different angles, we asked our city attorneys. Commissioner Macy said, "If you actually read the plan, you can understand that there's just simply nothing to that." It's almost as if people are getting their information from something other than the document, which is really disheartening, because I too would have, be very passionate and angry if somebody told me that my single-family neighborhood was going to be destroyed by all of these new developments and buildings. I mean, literally, that just isn't the case. There's no motive, and the document itself reflects the fact that that's not the case. And I think that was really a missed opportunity, because of all of the focus on, you know, that dialogue, I think it really led people astray, and maybe we could've got a little bit more information on a particular neighborhood node, or a little bit more information on a crosswalk, although we did get 6,000 data points, so that is a lot. But, you know, we've heard this before, you know, maybe some of the same sources that said there were gonna be 42 marijuana shops on Woodward, or that the farmer's market is closing. We hear these things all the time up here. And what I challenge people to do is ask the questions, read the documents, talk to us, and trust that, that, you know, there are things out there that can be distributed that are untrue. And when you hear consensus, there's no grand conspiracy, there's no code ring. I heard that public comment, there must be some sort of code in here. I feel left out, Mr. Murphy. Is there a code ring that I was supposed to get in the planning commission cereal box to help me understand how we're gonna destroy single-family homes? No? Okay, good. Oh, does he? Okay. So, I mean, we can't jump to conspiracy theories, we can't jump to fear-mongering. What we really have to do is appreciate the fact that we have an awesome plan here. Let's not look what's not in the plan, let's look what's in the plan, okay? And we have some really great stuff here. I also am very interested in the neighborhood nodes. These nodes allow for opportunity to service the neighborhoods. I love where I live, because I can walk to the grocery store, I can walk to the liquor store sometimes, especially after meetings like this. I can walk to the CVS, the hardware store. It is an amazing quality of life to get all the things that I need. Heck, I went, my wife's sick today. I went to CVS three-times. I mean, it was amazing. So, I think when we talk about quality of life and preserving our neighborhoods and enhancing our neighborhoods, we're talking about looking at our corridors within the community and making them better for everybody. And our neighborhoods are way better the more we plan. Right now, we have a PUD process, we have developers come, put pressure on us, let's set the ground rules that say, "This is where we want development, this is the type of development we want." And we understand that that type of development is gonna make us better, make us stronger, our neighborhoods better. So, I think that this is a really good plan, I'm gonna be supporting it. Does it have everything that I personally want in it? No, but there's 60,000 people we have to consider, and I think it does a really good job of balancing everyone's needs. Commissioner Douglas.
Mary Farnery, I move to adopt the Royal Oak Master Plan 2050.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas.
What?
Recall that at the beginning of the meeting, there was a typo in the last paragraph of the proposed resolution. It had "May 12th," so we'd asked that any proposed resolution reflect today's date, which is actually now May 20th, so it would not even be the 19th. I think the original suggestion was the 19th, so it would be May 20th. And so, with that, I'd ask that you consider including that in your proposed resolution, please.
I move approval of the Master Plan 2050 as voted by the city commission on May 20th, 2025. Does that do it?
There's like language you can read.
There's, as cited in the document.
Well, so your motion includes approval of the proposed resolution to approve the master plan with the change of the date in the last paragraph?
Yes.
Would that summarize your proposal?
Yes.
Correctly, thank you.
We have a second by Commissioner Herzog. All right, discussion. Mr. Kolo.
I actually have one quick question. We heard a couple times tonight that we should put this to vote other people instead of us. I was hoping the city attorney can clear up, like, is that an option?
For me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So, the master plan process is strictly dictated by the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act. And under that act, the language for adopting a new master plan is very specific, using the word "a master plan shall," shall be adopted under the procedures set forth in that section or the sections that are applicable, including the fact that either the planning commission or the city commission in this case, who chose the responsibility of final approval, shall actually, must approve by resolution or disapprove, the proposed master plan. There is nothing in the Planning and Enabling Act that would allow for a vote of the public, even an advisory vote, that's nowhere in the act, and thus, in my opinion, it would not even be permissive because of the strict language used in the statute that dictates you shall only follow the procedure as outlined in the statute. And I can say emphatically that the city has gone above and beyond in following that exact dictated procedure to the letter.
Okay, so we are fulfilling our legal duty to either approve or deny this.
Correct.
Yes, correct. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion points? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The master plan has been adopted. All right. So that brings us to, I believe, Commissioner Herzog's favorite part of the agenda, which is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Commissioner Herzog to adjourn. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Lengthy discussion on this. Commissioner Herzog?
Um, I would just like to, I want everyone to get home safe, it's very late.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Adjourned.